Thank you for being a council member, so we about to start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Patterson Municipal Council, we welcome you to the meeting on October 15, 2024, 7:00 PM. The meeting is now called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call for Municipal Council regular meeting of Tuesday, October 15, 2024. It's scheduled for 7:00 PM. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Present.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Here.
Councilwoman Davila?
Present.
Councilman Jackson?
Here.
Councilman Kalik? Councilwoman Mims?
I'm here, ready to serve.
Councilman Urdin?
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Velez? Mr. President?
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this evening's prayer is been rendered by Deaconess Phyllis Riley, Deputy City Clerk of the City of Patterson, which has been followed by the flag salute led by the Honorable Council President Alex Mendez.
May we all stand at this point. Father God, I just want to make a declaration this morning, this at this evening, that this is the day that you have made, and I'm going to rejoice and I'm going to be glad in it because everything that shouldn't have happened today, happened. But Lord God, I will remain confident that I will see the goodness of you in the land of the living, oh God. So we thank you, Lord God, and we invite you into our presence on tonight, oh God. We pray, oh God, that you will orchestrate this meeting in the name of Jesus Christ. You will speak through the mouths of the people that hold this dais, oh God, and you will make the decisions in their heart, oh God, and they will speak it forth as you declare to their hearts in the name of Jesus Christ. I thank you, Lord God, for the people that are assembled here on today, oh God, and I pray, oh God, that you will bless them going in and bless them coming out in the name of Jesus, oh God. So we ask you this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please stay standing. Now let's do a moment of silence for those, the most beloved one in our community and for our troop. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. May we sit. Before we start with our agenda tonight, we have a presentation by Councilwoman La March, Dr. Lysa Mims. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President. And though here in the city of Patterson, it's always a privilege and an honor to be able to recognize people from the great city of Patterson that are doing great things. So on tonight, I want to really, really allow Patterson, those that are watching now and later, and anytime you see him in the community, you see him on Facebook, if you do a ride, share with him, or just to get some of his nutritional advice, bodybuilding, training as he's a coach in the great city from the First Ward of Patterson, we want to give a great big shout out to none other than our First Ward 2024 Wrestling Bodybuilder Championship, Mr. America, Mr. Rodney Addison, if you will please come up. If you will come forward. And so, you know, when, you know, in life, we always say things like, I want to be like this person when I grow up. I ain't gonna even lie, I don't want to be like that when I grow up, but maybe a little more toned, you know, you know what I want to do. So congratulations. I wanted to do something really special and thank you to Lorenzo. He created this beautiful plaque with different forms of him when he was doing his competition, and I'm really proud that you have put Patterson yet once again on the map. Congratulations, Mr. America, 2024. Many tried, many went against you, but at the end, you were victorious. You've always been our Mr. America, but now Patterson is aware and so is the whole world. Congratulations.
Thank you, Patterson. So for me, what being Mr. America stands, symbolizes is, is more than just being someone who flexes on stage. I wanted to be able to transcend it from the stage into the community seat. So what I'll be doing with my title, because this is a very impactful title, for those who do not know, Mr. America is the original bodybuilding competition in the country. Every other thing, every other competition came after it. So with that notoriety that comes with the title, I will be reaching out to these various natural organization, natural bodybuilder organizations to start creating a fund, to use that fund to create more educational and recreational programming, starting right here in the city of Patterson. Also, the Mr. America Organization, they have pilot programs where they will put funding towards creating wellness facilities for police officers and for firefighters and for the public. So I'll be talking with the trademark holder of Mr. America to start that process in the spring.
And right before we have another presentation, I want to make this public acknowledgement to Mayor Andre Sayah. We should have a ticker tape parade in honor of Mr. America in the city of Patterson. Let's put it together for him. Sometimes, even if he don't want it, we're gonna do it anyway. And if we need to include other people that's been doing some great things, let's have a ticker tape parade for all of our great athletes and great people that have done great things in the city of Patterson, and you'll be the one to lead the charge. All right? Andre Sayah, I hope you're watching. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just want to say I am excited about Rodney Addison and what he has done for our city. But I always say, sometimes we forget who helps him get there. And I want to say to you, Nikia, this is for you, because as he was training, you was training. When he was eating, you was eating. So you was doing everything to help him to get to where he had to get to, and I want to recognize you for being with him, helping him to get to be Mr. America 2024. And Nikima, this is for you, sweetheart. That's for you, because it's so important that we recognize the second, the other half. It's so important. I love you guys. All right.
Council President?
Mr. America, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President.
All right, and then Councilwoman Mims, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you very much. So?
Council President, I need to do the statement of compliance. The statement of compliance.
Councilman Jackson, let's do the statement of compliance, right after the statement of compliance, we get into business. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Statement of compliance for the Open Public Meetings Law for 2024-2025. Today's meeting date is October 15, 2024. The time is now 7:40 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. One, the annual notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council was compiled for the year 2024-2025 on or about July 1, 2024. Two, a schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2024-2025 was duly transmitted on or about July 1, 2024. Two, the North Jersey Herald News, The Record, The Arabic Voice, The Italian Voice, The Perseid County Pulse, Dominicanan News, La Cisca Internacional, El Especial, The Patterson Press, The City Post News, Tap Into Patterson, The Weekly Bangla Patrika, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2024-2025 was prominently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor in the place reserved for the announcements of this type. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2024-2025 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. And five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
Councilman Jackson?
Brother Addison, before you leave, before you leave the room, I wanted to make sure I give you some words of encouragement. First of all, what I want to do is congratulate you, not just you, but your entire team, your family, your mom, your significant other, and I'm, I'm, I want to say that we're proud of you for doing what you've done on the world stage despite of, despite your community offering a large amount of support, you made it on a large scale. And unfortunately, it's a reflection of what all of our young people have to go through. Despite not having a recreation center for our children, despite not having paid coaches, despite not having facilities for you to train at, despite not having, you know, health and wellness facilities. Now, we know you're doing it as a professional, but as a youngster coming up, you had to tread your own way, you had to make your own way, you had to find out about these things, and despite the lack of support from your city, you've done what we always do. You continue to shine, and I'm enormously proud of you. I'm thankful for the phone call that you brought, you gave to me this, this week to inform me about your win, and I encourage you. And what I'm most proud about, and this is to the community, as the young man, the brother just won on a national platform, his focus is still back on Patterson. His, his acceptance speech of the recognition is to say what he can utilize his platform to provide back to young people, back into the community of Patterson. And if, and if that example was being led by those of us in positions who've been chosen to be in positions to lead, just imagine what condition our community would be in. We wouldn't be fighting these, these streets so hard with young people losing their lives. So, I mean, hats go off to you, well beyond your accomplishment of the Mr. America accomplishment, but yet, what you've done despite the support from the community, the lack of support from the community, and what you continue to do, how you continue to be a role model in your success, brother. I'm proud of you and your family and the work, the great job your mom has done in bringing you up, brother, and I appreciate you. Yes, yes, thank you, brother.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Jackson. And definitely, Brother Addison, once again, Mr. America, congratulations. You know, keep being that role model and a sample for the children in our community. So, thank you, thank you so very much. Outstanding work. Thank you. Thank you. Now, let's do payment of bills. Councilwoman Davila?
Thank you, Council President and Council members. We're in front of you, payment of bills, on the amount of $17,904,556.22. In the general government, out of the $4,881,881,000, I want to apologize to you guys. Right now, I am not feeling well at all. I have the worst stomach ache, so I want to apologize. So let me just repeat it again. The general government in the amount of $4,881,399.74, of that amount, 4.5 million is for health insurance. In addition to that, there was another Board of Education payment made of $6,351,919.92. In addition also, this was a payroll week of $5,144,592.21, making that a total of My motion is for payment of bills.
Second?
It was moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Mims.
Discussion?
Discussion, Councilman Jackson?
Yes, Council President, Chair. On the second page, where statutory funds are, is there a possibility for me to get an outline of what reserve for general ledger is supposed to mean? Reserve for general ledger.
Councilman, those are all the departments that are from... In the last page, from 9913 to 9950. In the last page, page, the page before last, two of three, you see 401, 9913, 9914, 9915. That's all, that, those are the categories for reserve for general ledger. They are refund payments, 5% county taxes due to the county, added amid bills due to the county.
Okay, I'll go through that. On page one of two, line item 9929, 2831, the first one there, under the description says food. What's on the desk for? Page one of two.
Grants.
G224, 9929, 2831, right under office equipment lease. Youth lunches, the next one underneath, two underneath, as a matter of fact. What is that one for?
There are lunches for a grant, for a grant program.
What grant? What grant?
I believe it's the senior citizens, but I can look it up for you. I believe it's senior citizens.
So, I was just handed a document that outlines some restrictions. I was trying to understand the parity. And this document that I was handed, under the MOU, item number four, food entertainment prohibited. Expenditures and reimbursements for any municipal funds of food meals or other food meals required by contracts in effect on this date of this memorandum, entertainment and receptions are prohibited. So what exactly?
That's through the city budget. Through grants, it's prohibited, but not through the city budget. We're not allowed to buy food through the city budget, Councilman.
I'm sorry?
We're not allowed to buy food through the city budget. So anything that's four or three is the city budget. The grant programs have their own rules.
Understood. All right.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on payment of bills?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call of payment of bills in the amount of $17,904,556.22. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, under normal circumstances, I would probably vote no against the budget approval just based on how poorly we've been managing, you know, our expenditures. And just in light of the mayor's recent State of the City address, and my questioning to the GTD Committee, as well as I extended that to the BA, on what item, one item that they have supported that has saved the city money, made the city money, made the community safer, or helped the community be cleaner? We're consistently spending money, it's like giving your child a credit card where they could just continue to spend money recklessly and there's no return on the expenditures. So I cannot, and then to listen to some of the rhetoric that was spewed during the State of the City address, and, and just in clear conscience, cannot vote in favor of, of continue to recklessly spend money this way. Madam Clerk, my vote is no.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims?
My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Urdin?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the votes are five yeses, one no, three absences. Payment of bills in the amount of $17,904,556.22 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, let's do quick the consent agenda, which is, we have item nine through 47 of the consent agenda.
Nine through, yes. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. The items listed on the consent agenda are numbers nine through 47. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter.
So moved.
It was moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Mims, and Councilman Urdin, roll call, Madam Clerk, discussion, Councilwoman Mims.
So just a reminder, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, just, just a reminder from last week's workshop, all the items that are Hispanic Heritage Month honorees, it will be moved by the particular council person who is honoring that.
Okay.
Thank you. So I just want to put that on record. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on the consent agenda.
Roll call and the consent agenda, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Wait, I would like to pull something off. Consent agenda, please.
Councilwoman Abdulaziz?
I would like to take 28 off. Vote separately, please.
So, Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that Councilwoman Abdulaziz is taking item number 20 out of the consent agenda. It will be treated.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight out of the consent agenda.
Councilman, I think we should put 29 separate, too.
Twenty-nine as well.
Twenty-nine as well.
Twenty-eight and 29.
And, yeah.
All right, Madam Clerk, so the consent agenda is item number nine through 47, taking out item number 28 and 29.
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Roll call on the consent agenda, amended to remove items 28 and 29. Councilwoman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Congratulations to all of the Hispanic Heritage Month honorees. Looking forward to celebrating you on January 25th. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Urdin?
Yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. So the votes are six yeses, three absences. The consent agenda is hereby adopted as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, let's do item number two on second reading.
Number two?
Yes. Number two on second reading.
Item number two, item number two is second reading ordinance, public hearing is required. It's ordinance vacating a portion of Cumberland Avenue, south of Toto Avenue, and extending to River Terrace where the said portion has not been utilized as a public roadway. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Dr. Lysa Mims, Public Works Resolution 24-039.
So moved, second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Davila, and Councilman Abdulaziz, roll call, Madam Clerk, on, well, public hearing is now open, members of the public that wish to speak on item number two on second reading.
See, now move to close.
See, now move to close on second reading by Councilwoman Mims, and second by Councilman Urdin, roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public hearing on item number two.
Roll call, close public hearing on item number two. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
So this item right here has been in the works for many, many years. I'm gonna say at least three, four years. Relax. Let me, let me, let me, I have my two minutes. And I'm very happy to see that finally, because this did come to us and it was removed, okay? So I'm very happy that this is moving forward. My vote is yes to close the public hearing on item number two.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Urdin?
Yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Public hearing on item number two is hereby closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to adopt item number two on second reading.
Roll call on item numbers two for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
So before I vote, and I'm sure Council President after this vote is complete, that we'll let him give some words of thanks. I just want to thank the owner of this establishment. I know he's been working on this for a long time. I actually went to the property with DPW and our engineers to see what their concerns and issues were, and this is the type of stuff that should be done when you talk about vacating. It's right next to the cemetery, there's no street, it's just a concrete, there's nothing there. Should have been done a long time ago. So I just want to apologize, not sure what happened in the past, but I'm glad that we got it done. And I'm happy at this point it's approved. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Urdin?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Urdin. Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President. So the votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number two is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On the item of the non-consent agenda, we have item 48 through 58, but we have the owner of the establishment located on this section, and I would like to open the mic for a few minutes for, for two minutes. Welcome.
You just said 48, Council?
Thank you, Council President.
Yes.
And thank you to all the council members. Yeah, it's been a little bit of a journey, but we're here, and I appreciate the council seeing the vision. The company was started in 1885, so marks 139 years that we've been, that the company's been in business. My parents purchased the establishment in 1976, and so we've been doing the same thing all along, providing memorials to those who lose, lose their loved ones in the city of We've always kept that road, and as Councilwoman Mims mentioned at the September 17th meeting, it's a very, very narrow road, and I want to give a big heartfelt thank you to Councilwoman Mims for bringing this forth to the governing body. I know there's always a lot on your plate. I know there's always a lot on your plate. I, I'm a councilman from Little Falls, so I understand the hard work that you do, and all the different items that come before you, and the research that you have to do. But this road, I think my parent, my late parents are smiling, it was something that should have been done quite a while ago, so I'm very happy to the governing body for passing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so very much. So, Madam Clerk, let's go on the non-consent agenda, let's start with item number forty-eight.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number forty-eight is a resolution authorizing the order of contract with CCTI Technologies for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of cameras and software through the city of Patterson's administration resolution twenty-four colon six.
So moved, second.
Thank you, it's moved by Councilwoman Davila, Councilman Abdulaziz, and Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilman Udin, and Council President Mendez, roll call.
Discussion, discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Mims.
If our DPW director can come to the microphone, I believe these are the cameras for the illegal dumping, correct? So last week at the workshop, I just have a few questions and/or concerns.
Yes.
One, I made the request because they had a list of parks that they were looking at, and I noticed Bear Track Park was not there, Tyrone Collins Park was not there. Have those parks been added after my request last week?
Bear Track has been added, Tyrone Collins, we will add it.
Okay, so I just want to duly on record, as long as those parks are added, but I also want to make sure that after this item is possibly approved on tonight, that there be an assessment done based on the cameras that will be installed, so that we can see that based on what we have now, what is the workload, how it has increased, versus what will happen after we install these cameras to catch the perpetrators.
Definitely.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Council President?
Thank you, Councilwoman Mims, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Director, this says also maintenance. We have current cameras and some areas are not working. Is this contractor going to fix those cameras?
It'd change out the formatted camera. The cameras stay, the hardware inside of them will change.
So the cameras?
To be compatible with what we're getting now.
So the reason I ask, and I'm a little discouraged, and I don't know if this falls on DPW or should be a public safety thing, right? So on twenty-third Ave, we put a camera there a couple of years ago, twenty-third and East twenty, by Route eighty, there's a lot of dumping along.
Yeah, that's not a DPW camera, that's a police camera.
No, so there is a camera, right? So I'm not, I just, say it with me one sec, there is a camera that doesn't work anymore. Constant dumping, constant DPW there, it's cat and mouse. So my resident sends me the video, so I pass there every morning to go to work, I went to work in the morning, nothing there. I come back, dumping. Contact my residents, I said, somebody, this happened within six in the morning to five. I get the footage, I see the guy, we get the van, so then I send it, they told me, is the resident prepared to go testify in court?
That's the same thing they told me.
My residents are not going to go testify in court, but this is where it should be a law enforcement matter. So if a resident, hey, I have illegal drugs dealers selling in my house, does the police department say, are you going to come in court and testify? In Newark Police, when people dump, the police department are the ones charging them with illegal dumping. They put their picture on the Newark Police Department page, saying these are the dumpers. That's why no one's saying a word. I have the video, the car, the van, the company. I think this shouldn't be a DPW enforcement issue when you have thousands of dollars of illegal dumping, right? We're not talking about throwing a Wendy's bag and littering, right? That's where we have to come together and look, I don't know if it's a criminal matter, legal department, it could be a joint effort, because I know my council colleagues, residents are not going to go testify in front of court, postponements, they did us a favor, given us the footage, we should investigate it, and maybe the police department, because I know for a fact, well, what's to say, hey, anonymous tips, text us anonymous tips, let's use this. I have the video, and my resident said, listen, I'm not going to court, I'm just trying to help out the city because the guy unloaded a van, a van of construction debris, so legal, I know the city of Newark, if you go on their Patterson PD page, they catch an illegal dumper, they actually put him on blast, and a ten thousand dollar fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Abdulaziz, and Director. I know I have a few council members that want to speak, but this is extremely important for us, we've been waiting for this, for all those cameras, so we have a million dollars that we're going to invest on camera, and as you know, illegal dumping, it's just out of control in the city of Patterson. But let me continue with Councilwoman Davila, Councilwoman?
So I just wanted to, kind of like, on the same note as Councilman Abdulaziz, I had the same exact issue, this was in the first ward, and the constituent whose home is across from where the illegal dumping was, came home from work and recorded it. Exact same thing, a van, just lots of debris, lots of construction, waste going onto the street into a certain property, right outside. And so she sends it to me, and then I go ahead and I send it, and the same exact thing, are they ready to testify? And I contacted the young lady back, and I say, and she goes, absolutely not. I've been living in this ward for many, many years, I mind my own business, it's a shame that I'm reporting something and that I'm being told now that then I would have to show my face on, she goes, absolutely not. And so, you know, to that know, Councilman Abdulaziz, I totally agree as well. I mean, there should be no reason, just like when you have dial, text, you know, text a tip, you should be doing the same thing for this type of illegal activity.
Director?
Thank you.
Not necessarily, they're speaking to me like it's my issue, it's not my issue, that's another issue.
I'm done.
Sure, but Director, listen, I think that, and I asked those question in the beginning of the workshop, are those camera will be connected with the Patterson Police Department?
Yes.
Does the Patterson Police Department will be monitoring those camera?
Yes.
Okay, the idea is, we got to be clear, nobody wants to report nobody here, nobody wants to get in trouble, people take picture, they put on Facebook, but if we're pretending a resident to go and speak, you know, and throw somebody in the court under the bus because they dumping, it's not going to happen now. What I'm expecting, and I ask this question, are we ready with the internet to make sure that those camera are going to be twenty-four seven out there in those area? The answer was yes. What I'm expecting to see is those camera catching the people that are illegally dumping in the city and prosecuting those people. That's what we want, we don't need people to start, you know, oh, take, send me the picture, can you come to court, no, that's not what we want. We investing one million dollars on those, we have seventy camera, if I'm not mistaken, so in those seventy camera, we expecting to see those camera in those location. We spending millions of dollars, and people, they're not respecting the city because we're not enforcing. Now, we amend the legislation, the maximum fine is ten thousand dollars for those people that are illegally coming into the city of Patterson and dumping garbage, a minimum twenty-five hundred. So the ticket is not the problem, the problem is the lack of enforcement, and we hope that we resolve the problem with this. Thank you.
Council President? Council President?
Councilman Udin?
Alright, thank you, Council President. Director, so we had a long discussion on this item in committee as well. I want community to know that, as you have mentioned in the presentation about last week, that the both Patterson Police Department and DPW is going to have access to these cameras, and you are going to get signals automatic, that nobody has to monitor continuously, but you'll get signals if someone does any illegal activities. Now, I want to make sure that, you know, the communication, cooperation between these two departments does not delay the process. Also, community needs to know if anything happens, that's a report should be published. The gentleman was here last week in the presentation, he spoke about the publicizing any illegal activities. If they catch anybody, anything happens, they'll promote this from their social media, whatever method they have used. So I definitely would like to see certain things happening. We don't want to just wait and ask DPW or Patterson Police Department, what's the update after three, four months. We want to hear update every single month is what happened. If nothing happens, nothing happens. If something happened, we need to know what happened in certain neighborhood, certain area. The seven, the locations that were selected as one of the most dumping areas, and that's why we have seven cameras, those are stationed there permanently, we want to see that whether that brought any change. So I would like to see the report coming every month from both DPW and Police Department. So with that being said, of course, we would love to support this, we are very excited because this is million dollars, you know, investment to it, if we don't get positive response from those kind of investment, then there's no point of investing. So I'm very hopeful, very optimistic to see something great happening, and dumping situation that's ongoing should be stopped.
Thank you, Councilman Udin, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President. Director, I had a list of questions that I asked the gentleman last week, apparently he was afraid to show up, he has you in his place. Were you the, were you the person who sourced all of the equipment for this?
No, Ed Bozzi.
Ed Bozzi?
Yes.
What is Mr. Bozzi's title?
Initiative or?
Chief Innovation Officer.
Innovation Officer.
Innovation Officer.
Okay, did he leave you with any answers to any of the questions that I asked him last week?
No.
The make and model of the camera?
No. I don't, I don't know if he left it with Harry, it wouldn't come to me.
Yes.
Council President?
Sure, just a minute, so you want to answer that question, Mr. Harry?
It was an email.
Yeah, Mr. Harry?
An email was sent out on Friday, eleven, October eleventh, at one twenty-eight PM, with information that you requested, Councilman.
That's the email there?
Yes.
Can I have it, please? I apologize, I had surgery on Thursday, so I may have missed that email on Friday. It's right there, sir, it's very good. Sure, and I'll wait to continue to speak.
Sure, sure, I'll select Councilman Jackson to review the email, so now let's move to Councilwoman Cotton, right after.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just want to re, Councilman Udin and I was in the DPW committee meeting, and we had requested that the legal department, that we want the fine to be starting at ten thousand. Ain't no two thousand five hundred, ten thousand, period, and I think that we have to put a resolution together, something together, saying that first, you get caught, no more negotiation, ten thousand dollars, right off the bat. The only problem that I find that we may have here in the city is that when they don't show up in court, then there's a warrant. But the problem is, nobody's going to look for them. So we got to have somebody, we still got to put a department together, I know we do have it, so they can go, you're not showing up for court, then we're going to go look for you. And we got to find somebody, even if we only put two or three people in there, once we start picking up people and locking them up, then they'll start thinking about it. But Corporation Council, I know that we had requested that we wanted something that it starts at ten thousand, period. No twenty-five hundred, starting at ten thousand, right off the bat. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Do we have Councilwoman Mims? I believe so. If not, we're ready to vote on this item, item number forty-eight. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item forty-eight?
We're not, we're not ready.
Oh, Councilman Jackson, let's go back to Councilman Jackson.
So?
You're good? Okay, so right after Councilman Jackson?
No, no.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
So I apologize, I have my pipe burst in my basement, and the guys are doing an emergency repair, so that's why you see me on my phone, they're almost done with the work, so I might have to step out, just to do a FaceTime to make sure everything is working with my furnace in my house. I have a request with the fines, because last week, Councilwoman Cotton and I agree, that was what I stated last week, that the fines need to be increased, but my concern is that when we go out to enforce, it gets adjudicated in court. So I'm putting it back on the record, as I did last week, that there needs to be a statutory committee meeting with the chief judge and those that are responsible, so that there can be communication that goes out to the judges, because it's not enough for us to have cameras, enforce and give tickets, and then they go to court and it's thrown out, because you know, that's a big piece of what's happening in the city. So I would like to make sure, and I'm putting it on record again, that statutory committee has this meeting in place with our chief judge and those that are in charge and responsible, to communicate this to the judges that are on the bench, that Patterson means business. I also want to put a request out, that there's immediate signage that is out with the fines on the sign, so that people are very much aware of what their offenses and penalties are, and if this is approved on tonight, I'll make sure it's posted on social media, but we should have a zero tolerance policy in the city of Patterson when it comes to dumping. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mims. So we're going back to Councilman Jackson?
Yes. So Patterson, and I'm only talking to the residents of Patterson, the Director, please, by all means, you know I have nothing but the utmost respect for you, and I'm glad that you made it clear that you're not the person that sourced this, that this innovation officer sourced this. And it's very simple, when you, when somebody takes you in the back alley and puts a gun to your back and says, empty your pockets, when you come out of the alley, the chances of having anything left in your pockets is slim to none. We have a million dollar budget here, of which some of these items are being classified as being, as costing in upwards of seventeen thousand to twenty-one thousand dollars. When you do a quick Google search on the model numbers, the most expensive camera is two thousand dollars. You have one camera here, that has the exact description, that's three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Now, we know that this is going through a third-party contractor, which he said he spoke about and didn't understand, you know, who it was going to be, but how, how do you allow yourselves to be charged? If you come to my house and tell me you're going to install twenty cameras, and you're going to charge me a hundred thousand dollars, and I ask you which cameras you're going to install, and it only costs a hundred dollars each, or a thousand dollars each, twenty times a hundred, times a thousand, is twenty thousand. Where's a hundred thousand? Let's just say by laws of business, let's say the cost of goods is a third, so alright, thirty-three, thirty-three and a half percent. So even if we did the math on that, it's still several hundred thou, we could put cameras in every single corner of the city, but this is what we're doing. We allow people to come forward, and they present these grand plans with price tags that's attached to it, that's absurd, and we act as if we don't understand the value of a dollar. This is, this is how this city is losing. We did the same thing at Hinchcliffe Stadium, where we allowed them to take a hundred and ten million dollars, they created six jobs for a hundred and ten million dollars. And now, while the paper posted today, five hundred days after, the restaurant's still not open yet, because they can't steal any more money. Now, Director, and I appreciate, because these burdens are often placed on your plate, where they have these bright ideas, they spend city taxpayers' dollars, and then they put it in your hands to manage, they bring you forward as the face of it, and absolutely, we trust you, but this gentleman should have been here tonight to discuss, where's the cost going to be? But watch this council irresponsibly vote to approve a million dollars worth of cameras, where it was like seventeen cameras, or a very small number. Most, some, a lot of, a large part of the number was repairs on existing cameras. So, again, Patterson, if you're wondering why the community's in the position it's in, this is a prime example. It's a very simple question, which he was reluctant to bring forward the information, and I'll make this available to anybody in the audience, if you want to know the model numbers, you can look it up for yourselves, it's not very hard to do. Just like I explained to council members, when we voted in Fifth Avenue to allow them to build those terrible subpar apartments for fourteen, a hundred, fourteen, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per unit, when the average market rate is seventy-five thousand dollars a unit.
Council President?
Just a minute, Councilman.
I'm not finished, I can continue. Fifty-five cameras.
No, no, still going to council.
Okay, so, here we are, and for members of the public, this coming Monday, or the third Monday of the month, there'll be another vote on it, where we're allowing another developer at Sandy's Court to bill us over four hundred thousand dollars per unit to do a repair, to do a repair, and they're not even going to completely gut those apartments out. Four hundred thousand dollars per unit, do you understand what that is? Apparently, we don't understand the value of money here. A hundred and ten thousand, million dollars, a hundred and ten million dollars to redo Hinchcliffe Stadium, which I said it then, when Persique did theirs for fifteen million dollars. So, this council's responsibility is to be the fiduciary, responsible arm to monitor and oversight on the administration, and everybody- And everybody's seen this council president, who used to be in opposition. Now, all of a sudden, they're holding hands while they're cutting ribbons together. This is where your money's going, Patterson. This is the example of how you're being taken to the cleaners. And if you're not smart enough as voters to open up your eyes on this misappropriation of dollars and this poor choice of spending, then you're just as stupid as some of these people that's going to vote in favor of this.
Council President.
Just a minute, just a minute. Councilwoman Davila, you're next. But let me just be clear on one, let me be clear on one topic. You see how I opened the mic for everybody when we have an item that is a healthy discussion, on an item that matters to us? First of all, I'm not holding hands on nobody, the mayor's on nobody. I'm just here to do the right thing. And when I see a project that is correct, that is right, I'm in full support. And that I should be doing. I don't see call, I don't see people. I'm here to work with everybody for the City of Patterson. That's what I'm doing right now. So I don't need to get into that. But Director, the question that I have, where's Mr. Bozzi here? Why he's not here? Because he's the one...
Council President.
Just a minute, Councilwoman, you're next.
No, it's not about being next, Council President. I asked for the floor.
Can you allow me to ask a question?
But Council President, I wanted to just tell you that last week, the BA stated that Mr. Bozzi would not be here.
That's fine, Councilwoman. Let me finish my question. We have the director in front of us, and I will open the mic to the rest of my council colleague. Now, Director, this is...
I don't know where he's at.
No, no, Director. No, this is my question, Director. And honestly, I know the job, just give me a minute. I know the job that you do as the Director of the Department of Public Work, phenomenal. You're on top of the staff, but technology is not your expertise. And correct me if I'm wrong, right? Right? You should not be, so, we're spending $1 million on camera. You should not be the person here in front of that.
I'm not here for this.
No, I understand that. So, but you're the one in the front. So they're supposed to be somebody responsible. And I understand that when we purchasing camera, camera's not what it costs. It's the system, it's the system that gathering that information. So, 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 Harry, so I'm going to, I just have a quick question, Harry. Because you know why sometimes you have council member here saying that we are so irresponsible, that we throwing money through all the wind, that we're doing this. Those questions need to be answered.
Council President, I should have the right to make a statement. And I'm going to tell you why. No, 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 and I'm going to tell you why. Council President, I've been waiting, and I'm going to tell you right now. To everyone out here, there is someone who is assigned as the purchasing agent. Nobody has referred to the purchasing agent. Who is a person who's licensed to do the procurement process.
Councilwoman Davila, I have the floor. No, no. Councilwoman Davila, I have the floor, and I allow every council member, on their turn, when you ask for the floor, I respectively open the floor. So, but you're going to wait after I finish. No, after I finish, you're next. You sit there and wait after I finish. You're next. So the question that I have, Harry, is for you. It's very disturbing to me, because very often times, we're used to this. You have council member, now they come out, and they drop our numbers about how much the cameras, how much the equipment costs. Now, I'm going to open it for to Harry. And if we don't have the right answer about how much the system is going to cost, how much the camera are going to cost, and the statement that Councilman Jackson's making, we will move this item to the next workshop. That's what we're going to do. So I'll open the floor to Harry. If any other council member wants to speak, but I think that we should move this item for the next workshop and have a discussion, have a clear number about how much each camera costs and how much a system is costing. It's a million dollar that we have. And that the responsible thing to do. Harry.
Please let them know your title and what you do, please.
Council President.
Council President.
Just a point of order, just a point of order.
Yeah.
Councilmember.
There was a presentation in the workshop. You were leading the charge. So I'm confused as to why you're asking for the numbers. It was in the presentation.
You know why, Councilwoman? Because that number is on record. You have a council member saying over here that those camera doesn't cost that much that this... So he put, he making a statement that he tried to make, so I want to open the floor, to have on the floor to Harry Savalas. That's up. Was Harry?
But I don't, he's sitting in the capacity as the acting BA, because she's not present.
And he didn't do the presentation.
And he didn't do the presentation. It's not fair to him to bring him into that.
But he has the information.
Council President.
Councilwoman Dean.
He's the purchasing agent. He does procurement.
The presentation that was last week, he gave a hard copy to every single council member.
Right, the numbers are there.
The numbers are there.
And it was discussed in committee also.
Now, if you really need to review and go back, you can just take a look at the presentation. All the numbers are there.
They were discussing committee as well?
Councilmembers.
And it was discussed in the committee as well.
Councilmembers. Harry?
Yeah.
Now...
Yeah, Harry. Go ahead, Harry.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmembers.
Yes.
I wasn't here last week, but I know it's a document, a draft document about all the specific locations of the 77 cameras. Also, the software, the maintenance, the software, and the different type of cameras that are going to be used for this. The locations, how many cameras, how many cameras for the police, how many cameras for the DPW, with the price attached. And that goes in two pages with the, it goes all the way to the end, describing every single location with the price assigned and the face one of this project. And the questions were asked about the model, Councilman Jackson mentioned it. And that information was received and given as part of the tonight's meeting. And, for example, you say, "Location 11, used to mention one." Okay.
He's talking, "Location 11, East Side Park."
Okay. Council President.
Let's have her finish. After that, we'll be ready for a voting section.
I'd rather him not say the locations.
No, we don't need to...
He doesn't want to say the locations.
Councilmembers, Harry, just, once you conclude, we come back. Councilmembers, while Harry conclude, Councilwoman Cotton, I know you asked for the floor. We'll come back to you.
And then, my job as a purchasing agent mentioned before was to look at the company, CCTI, and verify that the number, contract number and everything were correct, which I did. I do every single contract that the city does. The project itself was managed by Mr., the innovation officer, Mr. Bozzi. He came to me at the end to make sure that the company had the proper credential and contract number in order to provide the contract.
Thank you, Harry. Thank you, councilmembers. The reason why I asked Harry, just to intervene, is because...
Council President, you said after he spoke that I would speak.
Okay, Councilwoman, you got the floor.
Thank you very much. So, once again, you know, I want to apologize for the outbursts, but at the same time, it's very... It's insulting to the person who is hired, who is licensed, who has, who does all of the procurement process. He's sitting as the acting BA right now, and he was not part of the presentation last week. Granted, the councilman, to my left, Councilman Jackson, did ask questions. He did. He didn't want to listen to what the gentleman was saying. We didn't have procurement here, right? But he is the person. So when I say it's insulting, he goes through a process. You just can't give a contract. There's a whole process. It goes through different committees. It went through DPW, it went through finance. It came to workshop, a presentation was done and questions were answered. You've got the sitting purchasing agent here. He is the person who goes over and reviews every contract. He's licensed to do this. So he just said something. He just looked online and just looked for the model, and he looked at just one piece of the cost, which is the equipment piece. He didn't talk about all the additional things, the installments and the software, and all of the additional things that that has to do with. So all I'm saying is, listen, I'm not saying that he's wrong with what he just stated. But I take offense to say that we're stupid if we support something when we sat in the different committees and we got our answers, our questions answered. And you got an email that you did not read, you just got it right now, but you also had the presentation last week. And so I'm just saying, don't call me stupid, because I'm not stupid. I sit in every committee meeting, I come to workshops, I come sit to regular meetings, whatever it is, because I'm about Patterson first. But I just wanted to make that statement, Council President, because we have someone here who's the person that is the sitting purchasing agent who does our procurement for us and who sits down with the different committee members. Thank you very, I mean, directors, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and councilmembers. Listen, it's important, when you hear the comment that a councilman is making about that we're stupid because we're about to vote on the program that doesn't cost... Harry is being, is being as a purchasing agent for many years in the city. His reputation is all the way on the top, not at the local level, at the state level, national level. I trust the work and his work ethic. Once we're getting this project, it's because it's been vetted by the purchasing agent, and he have done all due diligence. Now, for the public, there was a presentation, it was at the last meeting, it's a workshop that was televised. Look at the presentation, but it's important, because you have people that are sitting in this, they are saying that they robbing the city, we allowing that to happen. With that being said, Madam Clerk, roll call this item.
Council President. In a form of discussion, I have the right to a second rebuttal.
Okay.
I request it first.
So, Councilwoman Dean asks for the floor. Councilwoman Dean, right after Councilman Jackson, and please, let's move on.
Thank you, Council President. So, my concern is that the numbers that we are speaking about, whether we are paying too much or too low, like, are we really expert on these things? That's my question to ourselves. If we really ask question every single thing we purchase, then we should ask question to every single, every single thing. Not only these cameras I'm talking about particularly. Now, Council President, I'm not blaming any councilmembers. What I'm saying is, when councilmembers, you were just talking, just addressing Councilman Jackson, saying that he asked for this. Councilman asked for many things. You definitely not, you address everything. My point is that when, it's not that I'm supporting or not supporting, this is not the point. Our point is the effectiveness of the things that we are bringing here. That should be the concentration. When you're talking about whether we are paying too much or too low, many things we are purchasing. Every single council meetings, we are spending money somewhere. Do you really say, or how do we verify that we are paying too much or too low for this? If that happens, I think we should testify or ask questions about every single thing we purchase. That's all my stand. So, again, you know, every councilmembers have their right to ask as many questions, definitely. And I definitely respect that. But again, if we ask questions like this, we should ask questions for every single item we purchase for the City of Patterson. That's all my stand.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dean. Councilman Jackson, right after that, we'll be voting. Thank you.
Beautiful. So, for a point of clarity, and this is all, for all of those of you who actually are concerned, what my council colleague to the left just said, that if we're going to be so critical of this item, we should be equally critical of every item. And I'm here to attest that I am. I'm always critical of every item that we're spending. In fact, to my councilmen's dismay, that is our job. I understand and I respect and appreciate you do coffee and Dunkin' Donuts and things of that nature. That's above and beyond. But the councilmen's job is to be financially responsible on the spending of the community's dollars. Our job is the balancing portion of Faulkner to hold the administration accountable. That means if we gave somebody a $50,000 raise that they're not, they're not living up to, we're supposed to be accountable for that as well. So, this, and for a point of clarity, and I need everyone here to please understand, not at one time did I say, "Call anyone stupid." What I said, that if you're going to support this, it is absolutely a foolish, in my quote words, stupid to do. Because we was given a presentation, and that presentation included software, it included maintenance. But what it does have is a line item for a camera that I asked specifically for the make and model number of, of which it says, "Seven cameras are being purchased for the Department of DPW in the amount of $17,963.27." Now, when I looked up all of the model numbers, because if you're at home, follow with me. 360-degree camera, part PPD, that's the one on the bottom. That's actually one of the least expensive cameras. And that one is model number AXISQ6100-E. If you look that up on any of these circulars that sell this kind of equipment, you'll see a completed, fully housed camera system, and it's listed for under $2,000. I rounded it up and said, it was like $1,800, $1,900. So I just said 2,000. If you, and that was the absolute most expensive camera on the list. The next one, mobile setup, says $3,600 for five of them. Again, at 2,000, meaning 1,900, being the most expensive, if you take a million dollars and you divide it by 2,000, you could purchase 500 cameras. But this system here, we're purchasing 67. So if you're talking about me not being responsible or not scrutinizing, I scrutinize everything. When I told you that it was a misappropriation to expend $110 million on Hinchcliffe Stadium, I sat here and begged everybody, and I talked about, and I broke it down, I did a presentation, how cities like Jersey City forced the developers to build 20% of their project, and I showed them. So to now sit here and say that I'm just making up numbers and then put the onus on Harry, Mr. Savalas did not source this information. Yes, he's the purchasing agent. He doesn't have the capacity to go back and look. If we're paying a professional who claimed to be, and I asked him clearly, what's his experience? What is his level of experience in CCTV? Zero. But he's the guy that we're paying, but they say we're not paying him because he's getting paid through a Bloomberg grant, who, by the way, the mayor takes a flight to New Mexico with to tout on how well of a job they're doing with the homeless, and just go right outside. The guy left the building and ignored all the homeless people sleeping outside. So if you're not going to scrutinize this stuff, then why are you a councilperson? Why did you run for election? This is your job, to scrutinize the spending. But, but now, but now, but now, Council President wants to say that if this is true, then we'll pull it. You're the one sat in committee. She's saying I didn't read my email. Yeah, I was under the knife, having surgery on Thursday, recovering. It doesn't take me to sit in a, in a committee meeting just to figure out we're getting taken to the cleaners. This is it. We're getting beat over the head. And people, all you got to do is go through every single line item, and this is what's happening in this city. This is why we're losing.
Right.
We're overpaying for every damn thing that we're, all the services that we're not getting. And this is what it is. So for me, if you're offended because I said that if you take this kind of action, that is stupid, just like right now, as Hinchcliffe Stadium is getting ready to be abandoned, when everybody's like, "I didn't know," just like you said, "I didn't know about the trailer park." I said the same thing then. We shouldn't pay 1.4 million for a trailer. But Jackson, don't let me live it down. I should, I will not let you live this down. I will not let you live every single inappropriate expense that you take on, you allow the public to take on by having an uninformed, uneducated guess, and you think people, just because they come before us and tell us something, we're just supposed to believe it. You could do that to somebody else, but you can't sell me that. You know, I'm not going for the used cars myself pitch. You guys want to move forward? You do it all the time. But guess what? I'll be one against, as usual.
Yes, Councilwoman Cotton.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say to Harry, and I hear Councilman Jackson pricing the cameras, and the cameras that are being priced is not to be installed. It's not to be the hardware that you got to go look for. It's not the, you got to save it for 60 days, the equipment that needs to save it. I want to say to you, Harry, I'm asking you, when, when you went and priced these cameras, because I understand, I could buy a faucet for $10, but the guy going to charge me 30 to put it in. You know what I mean? So I can understand that. That's what it's going to be, because I can't put faucet in my faucet. So I want to say to you, Harry, I hear what Councilman Jackson is saying, the cost of each camera, but what about the cost to install all this stuff? What about the cost of the software? What about the cost to put all this together so that it can connect from the police department to the DPW department, to Barkley Street, where it's at, so everybody can be connected? Who went and looked at the price of the cameras, and this is with the installation and the software that got to go with it, for you to store this equipment? Tell me who did all of that?
Council President, to the chair.
Yes, Mr. Harry.
The answer to the question is Mr. Ed Bozzi.
Okay.
He dealt...
No, but, no, no.
Councilmembers, councilmembers.
Council members, council members. Let's, let's be respectful. Councilwoman Cotton, out for the floor. Please, let's be respectful. Councilwoman, please continue.
My question is, you know, I can know what a camera costs, but I gotta have somebody to put it in.
Mr. Bowes spearheaded the project, and when he was close to the end, he contacted me to make sure that the company, he was offering the product, had a contract, like I, you show you, under the Hunter County. So that was the moment, then, with the information that I received from Mr. Ed Bowes, I prepared the resolution knowingly that the contract number the company had, it was a valid number. That was the only part.
Members of the public, please.
That, that was the only time that.
Please, Ms. President, no, no, no. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call on this item, please, please, roll call.
So.
Council, members, members of the public, please respectfully, if you allow us to conduct the meeting, Harry, just finish your.
I want to end the saying, that while I receive information provided by Mr. Bowes, I prepare the resolution, like I do in every contract, make sure that the vendor and file has a contract, they allow them to do the job. That's it.
Thank you, Harry. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number 48 for approval, Council, Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I wanna say that we've been waiting quite some time, and one of the questions that come up that, and I remember, it came up in the police department. We rent, um, we rent cars for our undercovers. And you have councilpeople who wanna know what kinda car we was renting. And they're saying to us, you know, we can't tell you what cars are undercover cars in the streets. And so you got, you got, we also had councilpeople wanna know where you gonna put some of these cameras? You'd be surprised that you can't do it. So we need these cameras, we got so many spots, we're killing our DPW people. I understand a lot of spots. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Davila.
So once again, you know, um, our DPW director does processes and brings to committee recommendations. He does research, he does recommendations, bring contracts, but they go through a procurement process, which is the same thing that the other director did. We had a good meeting in, in, um, with the police department regarding these cameras. Um, I was satisfied with the information that I saw, some that I can't share. Um, everyone knows that AI is the big thing now, right? And that's very expensive, and these cameras will have that as well. Um, and so, you know, with what I said before, I'll stand with what I'm saying now. I support this wholeheartedly, my vote is yes, and I just want you to say, I have a lot of respect for you and the work that you do. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, first to the public, I don't have to tell Mr. Savalas that I have a great deal of respect for him. Our relationship lets me know that he has a mutual respect for me, as he knows that I have for him. He clearly said, he did not appear this. He clearly said, he simply verified whether or not the vendor was qualified to receive bid. If you round up the 77 cameras that we're gonna get, and you push that number up to 100, that would make this bill, at the cost of the most expensive camera, the bill would be $200,000. So that, does that mean you allow a vendor to hit you in the head for $800,000 to do an installation? Do you take your car to the tire shop for a $100 tire and allow the guy to charge you $2,000 to change a tire? Like, it doesn't make any sense. Now relative, relative to the vetting process, and bear with me, please. This is a letter that I did receive in my email. I did receive this letter in my email, and I did read this email while I was, you know, recovering from surgery, like everything else. "I would like to express the engineering department's frustration with the city council's decision on making a change in the ordinance, amending Patterson Code Section 40731 without going through the proper channels for discussion or approval. I would ask the city council if they knew the procedure for, for the project review prior to this discussion. Something tells me if they did, they wouldn't care because the support here looking to gain from making this change. As we know, there was no meeting with DPW director or cities engineer regarding this change, which will totally affect the engineering department's review process. We know the developer put the battery in the backs of councilpeople to push this change. Through our conversations with administration, we know the developer plainly said, there's nothing anyone can do about this change because I have eight out of nine council members guaranteed voting yes." In other words, he understands who has the power to make changes in the city. Specifically to, I'm not gonna name any council people, there's council people named here, because I don't want anybody to make any accusation that I'm calling them something. I didn't write this letter, by the way. "Thank you for having the city's best, the City of Patterson's back on this issue for spearheading this without proper discussion with the DPW director and especially the engineering department. By telling the developers they can pay the sewer fees prior to them getting their certification of occupancy is meaningless, it holds no weight. The building will be occupied before the paint dries. Right now, as we speak, 90% of new buildings are operating without proper COs, and the other 10% of new buildings go through the proper procedure to obtain COs because these 10% come to the engineering office looking for closed-out letters that Community Improvements is asking for. If you think the unpaid sewer fees list we prepared is ridiculous now, wait until the change takes effect. The one thing we had to stand on without the developers was to hold the release until they paid the sewer fees." Now, if you're gonna sit here and make accusations about me formulating something in difference of, I'm be sitting here every single day fighting on behalf of the community. While people are writing these letters, this letter was given to every single councilperson while the item is written on the agenda tonight that we're talking about. So it was in everybody's email. Now, if you're gonna question me out there voters, please, by all means, go ahead and do. But what I'm giving you is facts. I'm giving you the information, you can look this stuff up for yourselves. We're being taken to the cleaners, we're spending way too much money for services that's not being provided, and you can go down the line, I'm not gonna do what they're willing to do. I'm not doing that. And if you wanna continue to support somebody that's gonna lie to you and tell you that they're doing the best services for you while they're sticking you in the back with a short, with a long blade knife, then you continue to do that. But I'm not gonna do that. And if you're gonna sit here and justify this, please, by all means, vote in the affirmative. Do what you're gonna do. I'm gonna still take the stance that I take consistently. Madam Clerk, my vote is hell no.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims.
And so, for this particular item, so I wanna say first and foremost, that we have, we're in desperate need of a plan to clean our city. Our streets are filthy, you know, the bulk process was a fiasco. There was a promise made, I was not here for that vote, but there was a promise made through the administration that they would bring bulk back. Bulk is gonna come back, you'll vote on it, we just need your vote. Vote for, um, for the garbage pickup renewal contract. If you vote, I promise in September, that's gonna be on the agenda. That did not happen in this October. But what really saddens me about this, and I, I agree, we need, we need something done for the illegal dumping. But here are my concerns. One, why is it that all year, where Patterson has been complaining, it's been all over social media, all the dumping everywhere, we've made phone calls, and it's continuous, and certain areas, it's been there repeated time and time again. People are even leaving votes in, in our community. Was there a true needs-based assessment done in relation to where these cameras should be versus only a few selected parks? The answer is no. Was there a cost-benefit analysis done to identify the needs of what we need done and what, what we're being, we're paying out of pocket? Was that done, and was there other options available to say, let's look at the procurement process to see if there's other bids? Haven't seen it. Next, why is it that the DPW director, engineer was not the lead on these projects? Why was it the chief innovation officer? When, for example, our DPW director lives in the City of Patterson, knows the City of Patterson, has come through the ranks of DPW, did not lead this charge, and we allow someone else to lead the charge, and they're giving us this information, which is not gonna benefit the residents for these reasons? One, $1 million? We could do a whole bunch with a million dollars in the City of Patterson. We can pave some of the streets that are not paved. We can clean the streets that are not cleaned. We could hire some more employees to get the job done. We could take the $1 million and use it for something else and take a million out of the budget to, to, we could take a million dollars out of our budget for things that we could use a million dollars from American Rescue Plan and give more money to our employees and their salary. We should be meeting with, before things like this happen, the statutory agency. I should not even ask you to meet with statutory agency. You know in the past that we've had issues and concerns where we, our inspectors have went out and they have ticketed. They've been to court and the tickets were adjudicated, means they were removed or they were not enforced. So are we just kicking the can down the road again without a real plan for the City of Patterson? I would say the answer is yes. Patterson, you placed me here to vote for you, and I am no longer gonna be in a place where I know it took 77 days before the funds run out, that they come up with an idea, let's just put it towards illegal dumping. Let's just make sure cameras are there with no real plan of monitoring, with no real plan of how the tickets will be allocated, with no real plan that you spoke to the judges or the chief judge to make sure that judges are aware of what's about to happen. So with that being said, I can tell once again, there's no real plan for the city. The dumping will continue, the filth will continue in the City of Patterson. And guess what, Patterson, you will be once again bamboozled. So with that being stated, I cannot support this item because those answers have not been, um, their answers have not been clear and transparent to the community. And Patterson, you deserve better. There is, we have elections that are coming up, and I need you to start paying attention. There's gonna be a whole bunch of stuff, they're gonna start jamming down, we gotta get this done, we gotta get it done, and it's gonna be a part of the campaign. I got this done, I got some cameras in those spots, and guess what, they're still gonna dump there. Because when they dump there, nothing's gonna happen after they dump. Oh, look, I got this done, I slammed this down, we got 77 days, and you're gonna see this agenda filled with stuff that is not gonna have any enforcement behind it, and Patterson, we're gonna be up to our neck in filth and trash. We've been, look, and I talk from a place of living here all my life, enough already. And so Patterson, I cannot support this item. Billy, I apologize for them overlooking and disrespecting you. You don't have to respond, I'm, I'ma speak for you. Disrespecting and, and, and not allowing you to take the lead and having someone on the outside do what you've always done for this community. Patterson, I'm voting for you, my vote is no.
Councilman Oden. Thank you, Dr. Mims, Councilman Oden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Patterson. So the City of Patterson is very welcoming for illegal activities to take place. As you know, this, every single day, we get calls from our residents, we see on the social media postings about the dumpings. We take care of and repeat the same actions multiple times. The same locations that we use, like, almost every other week, we have to report to the DPW about dumping issue. For the lacking of no surveillance there, we cannot or not able to catch the illegal, whoever does the illegal activities. Now, we are waiting for the cameras. My part as the chair of the DPW, I can say that I sat down with both the gentleman who presented last week and the DPW director. My questions regarding the DPW cameras and the Patterson Police Department cameras, I asked to both of them. Director was there, I asked question, how come he selected seven spots, seven station cameras? And that answer came from the DPW director that he, in, from the last few years or few months, call of regard, of regarding the dumping issues, these seven spots are selected as regular dumping areas. There are some, some of the cameras that can be removed, mobile, that can be stationed in different location based on the needs. And also, both Patterson Police Department and DPW has access to it. I also asked question whether someone needs to be there to monitor. Because what happened is, sometimes we get call or we see there is, you know, a trash somewhere, then we have to report, then police department or DPW has to go over the cameras to find out who did it or not. The answer was, no, nobody needs to report them. The cameras are going to signal them automatic if that happens in anywhere. And that said, it's my, my answers, my questions. Why am I saying this? Because that continuous dumping issue should be stopped. Now also, I asked the question that, how would you know that something happened, something got, someone got caught? And last week also, they presented here, they mentioned that there are going to be a name, name or shame, uh, you know, presentation from the social media, if anybody does that, we are going to post them on the social media to make sure that no one dare to repeat or do certain things again in, in our city. Now, how would you stop this if we do not purchase cameras? Yes, we may have ideas. We may have great ideas on the, on the, on the floor, which maybe that I recorded something, I posted on the social media, why don't you take action on it? Yes, we, we did that, uh, many times. Why did it happen? Because the person who recorded has to show up to the court to, uh, you know, for testimonial. Does it really happens? Not really. So what's the, what's the, what's, what's the strategy you can take? We have to make sure that the cameras are effective, and both Patterson Police Department and DPW work together to make sure that no dump are coming here. We cannot be anymore welcoming for the criminals. And, and I believe that if DPW and Patterson Police Department, without asking questions, if they report to us every month that nothing happened this month, it looks like we are pretty successful. If they say, okay, something happened, we caught them. Or, uh, the areas that we posted the cameras, nothing happened, those are yes, but they found other, other locations. Then we have to remove, we have to rotate or relocate the cameras that are mobile or can be removed. Now, this is what we can expect from them. My point is we cannot stop purchasing or stop moving forward. And DPW director, I really thank you, because I asked this question. We, we had a meeting about three, four hours meeting with the committee. And it's not really just we came here and the presentation, I'm satisfied with this. There's multiple communication between, regarding this matter. And I definitely believe that this is going to help us if they, they keep their word. Whatever they said, this is on the record. So, uh, Director, I, I, I expect that this is going to be very effective if both Patterson Police Department and DPW work together. And as, as it was stated, that how you are going to monitor and also, uh, you know, implement the regulations or the ordinance that we have, uh, on our, on our, in our city. And I believe that we can, we can catch or we can stop dumping in our city. With that being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Oden. Councilman, Councilman Apolitius, we're voting on item number 48 for approval.
Madam Clerk, yes, I know what you're trying to move on on. So before I vote to the residents of the City of Patterson, at the end of the day, we have a major, major, major issue when it comes to illegal dumping. And at the end of the day, this council is tasked for supporting initiatives that are gonna solve problems, right? This is, illegal dumping is not an issue that impacts one specific ward. If there's a common thing, it's from Ward 1 to Ward 6, dumping occurs day in and day out. And one of the things that helps illegal dumping is CCTVs, right, these cameras. And when you could bring this here, we could dissect the cost, we could dissect the product, we could say where it's mine, we could get better, this is too much, that's not too much. At the end of the day, you wanna, you pay. At the end of the day, you want to, you pay for what you get, right? We're getting seventy-seven cameras, approximately twelve thousand dollars per camera, and the camera, this is where you have, I know this for a fact, because in my profession, we have many cameras, the software is where it costs the most. Go on your Apple iPhone and try to purchase cloud services. Sometimes the cloud services, the cloud service is more important than the actual product. Let's take our body cams, for example. The body cams were purchased for the Police Department are cheaper than the software that we have to have, because we have to store them for OPRA's, for court cases, and whatnot. So when you're looking at, yeah, I get it, you want to look at two thousand dollars, right? That's one aspect of it, that's one aspect. You need the wiring, you need the labor, you need the pieces, you need replacement pieces, you need maintenance, you need the company, and that's the best part of this, the maintenance of cameras, because guess what? When we purchased cameras before, we never said who's going to maintain them. That's why none of the cameras in the city are working. The Police Department bought hundreds of cameras, you see them, go drive around Patterson right now, you'll see them on the poles, they're not working, because you know why? We can't maintain them. So you, this company is also maintaining the cameras that are going to help us solve the illegal dumping. The same illegal dumping that each council member has received emails on, texts on, and so forth. I will be gladly to debate and stand toe to toe with any resident, now when they call me. Councilman, what are you doing for this illegal dumping on Twenty-third Avenue? I just support initiative to purchase seventy-seven cameras to be our eyes and ears to try to catch these bad people, cowards that are dumping. So I'm doing my job, I will gladly vote yes on this to get the job done. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Abdulaziz. Council President Mendez.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Council, Council Callie. Before I vote, council member, let me remind that we have a secret and closed section to take from action in another meeting, and I'm going to try to do public portion right after this, to move on, right after this vote. But let me just explain to the community one thing. Patterson, I know, I know we have, our community, they're smart. The only, the only dissatisfaction that I have tonight, and I feel, I feel really bad, I'm very upset, I'm very disappointed at this project, and the reason why I'm extremely disappointed at the administration is because we don't have an expert in technology in front of us to debate this. We're spending one million dollars, and let me be clear, my question we're answering, I was concerned about the internet. Are we going to have a good internet to make sure that those cameras are on twenty-four seven? The answer was yes. Is the Police Department going to be monitoring those camera twenty-four seven on the central police station? The answer was yes. So we got to have police officer looking at those camera in those location that people are dumping every day. Those are my two question. The next question was the matter of the camera and the technical support as well. The answer was yes. All my answer were, you know, was, I'm satisfied with the project. The reason why I'm upset is by, is because administration should have an expert to debate with people, some council member that they add and they talk and talk and talk, because this talk is cheap, oh, that camera costs two hundred dollars. Everybody knows that the software is what costs most of the money. Bad camera on the Police Department, you know how, we have to spend a huge amount of money on the software that run those camera to gather the information to be able to use those camera what we need. Now, with that being said, what I'm requesting is Mr. Ebos, that he's the one running this program, I'm expecting to see on detail, so he, I know they're listening, I want to see those answer about the software and how much it costs, because I know that I'm making the right decision by voting yes on this. Illegal dumping is out of control, Patterson. I have to call the Director every single day, Twentieth Avenue, Rivers Street, Sixth Avenue by the track, Eighth Avenue, and people calling me every single day, Councilman, what we going to do? And I understand that the main reason why illegal dumping is out of control is because the bulk situation that we cannot control it. That's the conversation that we need to have. I spoke with administration, they're getting ready to go out for a bid on the bulk pickup, because we need to correct the problem. But at the same time, we have one million dollars here to buy seventy-seven new camera plus the software, the installation and the maintenance to make sure that the Police Department monitor those camera and see who is the one that dumping in the city of Patterson. And that's what we voting on, and my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, two noes, two absences. Item number forty-eight is hereby adopted.
The, Director, now that we have you there, so we have-
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We have public work, my Director, so public work, item-
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, item fifty-five. Madam Clerk, let's do item fifty-five on public work?
Yes.
Yes, we have those two items for you, Director.
What?
Item number fifty-five is a resolution authorizing a second contract extension with Waste Management of New Jersey Inc. for the disposal of recycled corrugated cardboard and commingled materials, bid number twenty-two dash three-one, for a period of three months for the Department of Public Works, Public Works Resolution twenty-four colon six four-
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Davila, Councilwoman Abdulaziz. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item fifty-five.
Roll call on item number fifty-five for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Oden.
Yes.
Mr. President.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number forty-eight is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, item fifty-six.
Yes. Item number fifty-six is a resolution authorizing a contract amendment to Neglier Engineering Associates for the qualification proposals for the design and construction administration for the Twenty-first Avenue Streetscape in RFP number twenty-two twenty-two dash two-nine for the Division of Engineering of the Department of Public Works, Public Works Resolution twenty-four colon six four-
So move.
Move by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Abdulaziz. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item fifty-six.
Council President.
No, and second by Councilwoman D, my apologies, Council. Speak a little louder, Councilwoman D. Yeah. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item fifty-six.
Roll call on item number fifty-six for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yeah, this is a long time coming, I'm glad to see it, Director. Hopefully by springtime, this whole project will be done. We've been working on this for a couple of years, this is a grant that came in from the state of New Jersey that I advocated very, very hard with administration down in Trenton. This is going to unify the streetscape in Twenty-first Ave from Madison Ave down past Boys and Girls Club, and hopefully we start to get this done and go on to the other side of Twenty-first Ave. So I'm very happy to support this, my vote is yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Abdulaziz. Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Davila.
My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson, Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Oden.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Oden. Mr. President.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number fifty-six is hereby adopted.
Thank you, council members.
Council President, before Director Rodriguez leave, please.
Councilwoman Cotton.
I know. No, no, I just wanted, I, on the, on the consent agenda, we had the, I want to let everyone know that we had, we going out to bid for the Twelfth Avenue Playground.
Yes.
We still haven't been able to decide yet about the back part of it on Godwin Avenue, about trying to put a playground area there, but the basketball court on Twelfth Avenue is going out for bid. Hopefully, when is the deadline, Director? For the bid to be back?
Better, got that, sorry.
Do you have any idea? Anyhow, I just want you to know, I did, a few people had called me about Twelfth Avenue Playground, so we are going out to bid. I just text, I just want to find out now, and I'll talk with you later, Billy, Director, about the playground in the back part on Godwin Avenue Street Side.
Okay.
Thank you, Director.
You got it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's do item forty-nine.
Yes, Mr. President.
Forty-nine.
Yes, forty-nine down.
Item forty-nine.
We have a fewer item before public portion, item forty-nine.
It's a resolution to amend the coming year, twenty-twenty-four.
I'm sorry, forty-nine is being removed out of the, out of the ASPR or VA in his capacity, Harry.
Let's do item fifty-two.
Yeah, so we're going fifty, going down, Madam Clerk, let's do item fifty?
Yes.
Item number fifty-
Let's do all the non-consent agenda and then public portion. Item fifty, Madam Clerk, yes.
Councilwoman.
Item number fifty is a resolution celebrating thirty years of ministry for Apostle Derek Etienne. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Dr. Lilisa Mims and Councilwoman Ruby Ann Cotton, City Council Resolution twenty-four colon six three eight.
So move.
Second.
It was move by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Cotton and Councilwoman D. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item fifty?
I know.
Roll call on item number fifty for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton.
I just want to say for Apostle, he's been, he's, he will be celebrating thirty years in ministry. Edvin, and so I'm saying congratulations on being thirty years in the ministry. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Davila.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims.
Congratulations Apostle Etienne, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mims. Councilman Oden.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President.
Thank you, congratulations, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are seven yeses, two absence, two absences. Item number fifty is hereby adopted.
And Council President-
Thank you, Madam Clerk, item fifty-one.
Green and purple.
I'm sorry?
Purple.
Item number-
Fifty-one, Madam Clerk.
Sure.
Item number fifty-one is a resolution celebrating Apostle Joel D. Rudolph for forty years of faithful pastoral leadership. It's sponsored by Dr. Lilisa Mims and Councilwoman Ruby Ann Cotton.
So move.
Move by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Ruby Cotton.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Mims.
I'm just the Apostle Joel D. Rudolph Senior.
Oh.
Joel D. Rudolph.
Rudolph Senior.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Sure, thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number fifty-one, as amended, we should read, resolution celebrating Apostle Joel D. Rudolph Senior for forty years of faithful pastoral leadership. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Dr. Lilisa Mims and Councilwoman Ruby Ann Cotton, City Council Resolution twenty-four colon six three nine. Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I just want to say congratulations to Apostle Rudolph celebrating forty years in the ministry, so Christian Fellowship Van Houten Street, they're very community person. Actually, once a week, they do a food pantry, they have always partnership with me in Barbara Park, Christmas and Thanksgiving, so I want to say congratulations, forty years of being in the ministry. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Davila.
Congratulations, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims.
So I met Apostle Joel D. Rudolph Senior, he was my pastor and spiritual father when he came to Patterson in nineteen eighty-one. I want to commend the great work he has done and is doing. His church is the Christian Fellowship Center, which is on three fifty-nine Van Houten Street. They will be celebrating him at the end of the month for forty years of faithful leadership and commitment to this city. I want to commend him and the staff and the church for the great work they've done over the course of the years to help our great city of Patterson. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Council, Council President Mendez.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President.
Item fifty-two, Madam Clerk.
Item fifty-two.
That's right.
Let me announce.
Let's go.
May I just announce the votes? The votes are six yeses, three absences. Item number fifty-one is hereby adopted. Item number fifty-three.
Fifty-two, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry. Item number fifty-two is a resolution appointing Eva Rezak to the Board of Directors to the Patterson Task Force for Community Action, is sponsored by Council President Alex Mendez, City Council Resolution twenty-four colon six four-
So move.
So move.
Second.
Move by Council President Mendez, second by Councilwoman Davila, Councilwoman Mims, and Councilwoman Cotton and Councilwoman D. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item fifty-two.
Roll call on item fifty-six, fifty-two for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz.
So I'll bat lead off over here, Eva. So I'm going to give you a fun fact. The sixth ward councilperson is the only councilperson out of this entire board that does not get an appointment to the task force. It was done in the eighties, that is true, Tom Rooney gave it up, and he does not get it, I saw the resolution in the emails. So, so you got to keep an eye, right? You got to be our eyes and ears, Eva, and I know you're going to do a great job, my vote is yes.
He's not even, she, she's not even in your board.
Thank you, Councilman Abdulaziz. Councilwoman Cotton.
Yeah. Thank you, congratulations Eva, being appointed to the Patterson Task Force for, congratulations. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Davila.
So I'm, I'm happy that, you know, I get to speak, right? On a different level of knowing who Eva Rezak really is. Someone who loves children, who loves community, and I know that personally, because she was someone that when my son was very young, okay, out of AHA, she was a person that took care of him, and she knew then that he was special, and she always, he was kind of a very lonely, you know, on the side person, and she would always go up to him and let him know, you know, Ms. Rezak has you. And, and let me tell you, he's going to be twenty-six years old, all right, and this is something that she's been doing for years. Patterson Public Schools lost someone great, but guess what, she's doing better things, and she's part of the community, and now she's going to be part of this task force. I know you're going to do a wonderful job, these words come from the heart, okay? We can agree to disagree on things, and that's okay, even in Las Mejore Familia, but at the end of the day, there's much love and respect, and anyone that loves my child, anyone that loves my child has my love and respect and support. So with that said, my vote is happily yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims.
Congratulations, queen, well deserved, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Oden.
Commissioner Rozak. Really, because you already got, you got five votes already, five plus, I believe. So again, this is very well deserved position, you are a strong community leader, that's how I see you, and I believe that Council President got the right person for this right job. And, yes, so again, congratulations. From now, I have to make sure that I use your title Commissioner Eva Rozak. And I love your last name, by the way, that's Bengali last name you're carrying for many, many years, and, and definitely, I'm so happy for you. Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Oden. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Eva, you know, it's definitely a blessing to have you as one of my constituents in the third ward, you are vocative, you advocate for everybody, you're the captain of that block, you, you're everywhere helping your neighbor, because of you, we put a sign that says, do not enter on your block, we put the speed limit sign, every time you call me with a request, we get it done, because you're helping me to do a better job as a councilman of the third ward. If I will have ten Eva around the third ward and in the city of Patterson, it'll be incredible, because you speak up and together we work great. I'm very sure that you're going to, that you're going to do a phenomenal job, you know, as my commissioner of the Patterson Task Force. Congratulations, we got to do the swearing formally here, and with that being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number fifty-two is hereby adopted.
Yeah. Thank you. So, let's move to item fifty-three, Madam Clerk.
Item number fifty-three is a resolution reappointing April J. Lampley to the Board of Directors, the Patterson Task Force for Community Action, is sponsored by Councilwoman Ruby Ann Cotton, City Council Resolution twenty-four colon six four one.
Second.
Move it.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman D. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item fifty-three.
Roll call on item number fifty-three for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yes.[1786.91]
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to say to you, Eva, uh, my appointment is coming on there. Her name is April Lampley, uh, to the Patterson Task Force, and I know that you would love April Lampley. So, I know you do, but she's really good and so, her name is April Lampley. Um, congratulations to my person to the Task Force Board. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Davila?
We're on item fifty-three, right?
Yep. Item fifty-three, yes.
So Councilwoman, we are reappointing, right?
Right.
Okay. She ain't coming there. She is there already, so, which is great. I'm in full support, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims?
Great job, Commissioner Lampley. Good to see you back. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Urdin?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Urdin. Mister President?
Congratulations, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mister President. The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number fifty-three is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item fifty-four, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilwoman. Item number fifty-four. Item number fifty-four is a resolution designating the third Saturday in every September as Family Fellowship Walk. It's sponsored by Councilman Michael Jackson. City Council Resolution twenty-four colon six-four-two.
Second.
It was. It was moved by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Davila. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item fifty.
Wait, discussion.
Fifty-four.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Mims.
So I just have a question because it's in our packet as a draft. I don't see anything, it wasn't signed by legal. They didn't put it in resolution form.
Corporation Council.
We don't have that.
They signed the res, no.
You have it, okay. I just want to make sure because we don't have that. We just have the draft.
Fifty-four.
But we're, we're okay, long as we have it signed. Fifty-four. She has it, we don't have that.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we signed it and sent it up.
Okay, thank you. It was signed today, so, okay. I just wanted to make sure because it's not in the packet. Thank you, Council President.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Roll call and item fifty-four for approval. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item is just acknowledging the hard work and commitment by Pastor Sevilla and the entire Kalapa organization and what they do to try to, um, uh, mitigate violence in our community and doing the peace walk. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Urdin?
So I, I definitely have to acknowledge the hard work of Kalapa and especially Reverend, uh, Hasso Sevilla, that we participated a lot in Fellowship Walk and I thank Councilman Jackson for putting this together and recognizing this particular Saturday, the third Saturday of September, to walk as a family Fellowship Walk. And again, uh, uh, this is, this is absolutely my honor to support the hard work for the entire organization and all the reverends, uh, their work for this organization. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Urdin. Mister President?
Uh, thank you, um, Madam Clerk. Um, definitely Pastor Sevilla's been doing an amazing job in the community for many, many years. Um, so he's involved advocating for people, helping the community, not only praying for our city, but supporting the community with action. So without being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mister President. The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number fifty-four is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have item twenty-eight, twenty-nine out of the consent agenda. Let's take, take care those two items. Let's start with item twenty-eight, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mister President. Item number twenty-eight. Item number twenty-eight is a resolution authorizing the solicitation of bids for the purchase, delivery, and maintenance of solar powered trash receptacles. Bid number twenty-five point one zero for the UEZ program of the Department of Economic Development.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Mims. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk, on item twenty-eight?
Roll call and item number twenty-eight for approval. Councilman Abdulaziz?
This is solicitation of bids. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
For the record, this is just a resolution for solicitation of bids. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
So just for the record, twenty-eight and twenty-nine were on consent. It could have been voted on a long time ago. And now we're just going through it. It shouldn't have been voted before. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Urdin?
So before I, before I vote, um, uh, I was in support of removing this item from consent agenda because I had some question to the director of UEZ. And I asked these questions and I got the answers, but again, I didn't get the opportunity to ask, uh, in front of public. Uh, no, you cannot answer any question now because we are voting, so, uh, as he, as he stated, that's all I can, I can tell you for the record, that two hundred seventy-six thousand dollar left for UEZ, uh, uh, you know, account uh, to purchase more solar trash can. So if we approve this item today, you're going to move forward to purchasing more trash can. That's, that, this is what I was told. So again, um, I didn't get a chance to ask you a question, lucky you, but, uh, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Urdin. Mister President?
Uh, thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes?
Thank you, Mister President. The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number twenty-eight is hereby adopted.
Members of the public, we're about to start public portion. If you don't have your name on the list, add your name on the list. You will have three minutes to address the council. Madam Clerk, let's do item twenty-nine?
Yes, Mister President. Item number twenty-nine is a resolution authorizing the solicitation of bids for the Clean Communi- Clean Commercial Corridors Project. Bid number twenty-five point one-one for the UEZ program of the Department of Economic Development. It's, uh, may I have a sponsor, please? Motion?
So moved.
It was moved by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Davila. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item twenty-nine?
Roll call and item twenty-nine for approval. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Urdin?
Yes.
Mister President?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Before my vote, uh, this is a clear example of democracy. Any council member could request an item to be removed from the consent agenda because they might have some question. And I always grant that to any council members to make sure that they make a smart decision, uh, while they voted. So without being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mister President. The votes are seven yeses, two absences. Item number twenty-nine is hereby adopted.
Yes, mem- mem- now, now, members of the public, members of the public, now, we're gonna start public portion. You have three minutes to address the council on a respectfully way and the administration as well. After the three minutes, I would respectfully ask you to move and allow the next person to speak because we have also a secretary session right after the meeting. We, we have a secretary session with a legal, with a legal team that is here to discuss a legal matter. And we will be back at the meeting on the voting section. So let me call the first speaker, Madam Clerk. How many speaker we have?
Twenty, Mister President.
So we have twenty, twenty speaker?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, twenty speaker, so let's call the first speaker, Madam Clerk?
First speaker is Ms. Eva L. Rezak.
Good, um, Madam, Madam Clerk, you. Go ahead, Eva. It's Eva, I'm sorry, who's the first speaker, Madam Clerk?
Eva L. Rezak.
Eva, okay. Eva, go ahead, Eva. Or you have to leave, okay. What's, what's his name, Madam Clerk?
Are you Don Graham's?
Yes, Mr. Train, how are you?
Don Graham?
Yes.
Don Graham.
Graham, like the crapper.
Yeah.
Um, I was, I was requested to appear tonight, uh, for a gentleman who was in, who was in absentee, Mr. Oliveris. He wished to address the situation in terms of the fifty thousand dollar increase in a certain position within the city. He also wished to address the city attorney's money that he will receive as an increase. In addition to the six thousand dollar increase that each councilperson will receive for payment for their aides. Okay. All right. The concern is about a fifty thousand dollar increase in salary for a person who is not here, the business administrator. In addition, he questions the city attorney getting the same fifty thousand dollar increase, alright? The council people here are getting twenty-five thousand dollars to hire a aide, okay? In addition, they're getting another six thousand dollars as a pay increase, alright? With that said, let me add one thing. As a trained accountant, the fiscal responsibility, which is called fiduciary responsibility, is not being maintained. I learned a long time ago, the way you steal money is you hide it in the books. Certain amount of money that is relegated miscellaneously is being misappropriated. The city is in trouble. I walked past the Passaic County Jail. It's being torn down. This city doesn't have a viable tax base because there are no large corporate entities in this city that pay the city. Okay? All the construction being done is the majority of rental property, which the people who live in that property don't pay taxes. So if you don't get the taxes from the owners, that's more money that's being taken from the city.
Thank, thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Eva L. Rezak?
Ready? Hi. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Eva.
First of all, I want to say thank you for, um, Mr. Mendez, for you really appointing me and trusting me to be a commissioner. Um, I know that Eva Rezak can say this, that wherever I get appointed, I'm going to do my job correctly, honestly, and professionally. I wanted to say also that, um, something that was being said before with the garbage. Recently, I was coming down, um, Seventeenth Ave and there was a young man from New York with a Yoohoo truck, a ri- no, a Ryder truck, a twenty-two foot Ryder truck. And he was taking out boxes and dumping them. And I got out the car and I let them know. I called the cops. But it took them a while for them to get there and they had left. So the dumping in the cities is really looking bad, but here it is. I thank each and every one of you ladies and gentlemen for appointing me also for commissioner. I will swear, solemnly swear to do my duty in the best of my capacity. And for all my constituents out here, sitting here, I am here to serve you in whichever way I can without no, no limitations. So once again, thank you for trusting me. My city, thank you for having me here. I'm very honored to be here. I will continue to fight for all of us and to continue to do the right thing. Mr. Mendez, once again, thank you for trusting me. Thank you for believing in me. And you're damn right about being the Third War leader. I'm the mayor in that block, Bobby. And no, but it's, they call me and they ask for help, so we all help.
That's right.
Because Ms. Eva doesn't die taking nothing. I just want to leave the legacy in Patterson that I was a hardworking, dedicated person who cared about everyone in my town. Thank you. God bless everyone and may we continue to stick with each other. No fighting, no arguing, lots of love. And thank you, everyone who's out here rooting for me too. Thank you so much. We love you more.
Amen to that.
Thank you, thank you. And to everybody that's watching, remember, row eight all the way. And not only that, we have a Puerto Rican woman who's running. It's a woman. Let's get all women out there to do our jobs. Thank you. She, right. There you go, bubu, because we all got, there you go, mama, I feel you. I get it. So we all gotta stick together and we all gotta work together because when we elect these officials, they know what time it is. We elect them. So they have to listen and I know they listen. So once again, I'm gonna do this. I tip off my hat and I'm, I'm gonna cry when I get home because I feel honored that I am in a position that I can help more. Because yes, I'm not in the school system, but thank you for acknowledging who I am. And thank you, my queen, for telling me I'm a queen. And thank you guys for acknowledging because it's good to be acknowledged for what you do in this city. Love you.
Love you too, Eva. Love you too. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Darlene Morris?
Okay. Uh, good evening. My name is Darlene Morris. Although I don't currently reside in Patterson, I was born and bred in Patterson and I am a lifelong Patersonian. Having run my own business, Cucho Jacolea, for seven years and spent many years working within the school district, I feel that my perspective is valuable, especially since my input has been sought after more times than one would ever expect. I'm here not only to share my thoughts, but also to propose solutions and actively engage in making them a reality. However, I have noticed that when concerns are raised to the council, there often seem to be no answers or resolutions provided. When Mike Jackson attempts to highlight certain challenges, he is frequently met with disdain. Yet many of his claims, as reported in the news, appear to be valid. Consider these issues. The art factory, Libby's, which reportedly owes the city nearly a hundred thousand dollars. The budget overrun on the stadium, ongoing garbage collection, code enforcement, cars being towed, people being uncomfortable, the homeless, as I walked in smelling, the smell of urine all the way up to this door. The city hall, um, roof, we're here because of the breakdown in city hall. I wonder why others haven't addressed these pressing matters with the same fervor. If Mike is misrepresenting facts, then let's expose the misinformation and clarify the truth. Some may criticize his approach, but remember, Saul offered David his armor. Yet David knew it wouldn't lead him to victory. It often feels like people want to demand compliance without taking action themselves. It seems to, it seems that to succeed today, not just in Patterson, you must become well adjusted to injustice and desensitized to the injustices of the status quo. Become a parrot in somebody else's cage, ultimately conforming to the narrow definition of success that benefits only the few. The decline of Patterson is evident and we need voices to speak the truth. Unfortunately, it feels like the leadership is leading Patersonians to the promised land of nowhere. As someone who is free, myself, as I am free and I have nothing, let me clarify that, I have nothing to gain other than the progress of my community that I was born in. I will continue to speak my truth and I, I, I will speak for the voice, the voices regardless to who thinks I should or not. In addition to that, I just want to add, I know there's numerous people that live, that do not live in Patterson that contribute to Patterson. I am not the only one. I know people that have come here, wrote business plans for people, contributed money, contributed their time, and they're still doing it. So in my opinion, you don't have to live in Patterson to be concerned. You don't have to live in Patterson to wo- work for people in Patterson to get answers for their businesses. You don't have to do that. All you have to do is care and love the community that you were born in. Thank you.
Ms. Deborah Hannibal?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and Speaker?
Good evening, Council. Madam Clerk, Deputy Clerk, to the administration, I want to say hello to Mr. Sevalas. So nice to see you. Uh, I know, uh, earlier, anybody that has had an opportunity I know earlier, anybody that has had an opportunity to work with you know that you're excellent. So it was nothing personal. I appreciate when a council person digs into the numbers because we need somebody to get to the bottom of things. Last week, during the presentation, there were many questions answered, asked, and I don't know that they've been answered, even for the public. We have a right to know what the answers were. So what happens is, is that we come here, we ask questions, we don't get an answer back. We hear the questions. We don't know if this is a good idea, but it's been voted on and we have to accept it. That's, that's how it happens. Now, I look back through to May 2021, the issue of illegal dumping was brought up then, and the council suggested then ten thousand dollars. So nothing happens. It's just like we just play in a circle. I wanted to talk about today being the deadline to register to vote, but it's, we waited so late to get to the public portion that is closed, so nobody can go now. So please, if you want to register online, you can go to vote411.org. And I still just am very concerned about the audit being late for 2021, the audit for 2022 that has downgraded our credit rating for Moody's. Patterson was one of thirty-seven local governments around the country that their credit rating was downgraded. So that's thirty-seven in the whole country, and one of two municipalities in the state of New Jersey. There are five hundred and sixty-four municipalities. So the BA said that the reason why that happened was the dog ate my homework. What she said was, was because of COVID, as if COVID was not a global pandemic. How, how can you be, sit and collect fifty thousand dollars and give that as your response? I expect a little bit more creativity. We have Mr. Savalas sitting here. Not only did she give herself fifty thousand dollars raised, but she hired another full-time person and somebody that was a part-timer made that a full-time. So that's just money just going out of the window. We're getting less and paying more. And I'm going to take a little extra time because we saw today, I'm going to wrap it up, I'm going to wrap it up, but today's paper, when I say the hits just keep on coming, the hits just keep on coming. If you see today's paper, the sewer fees aren't being collected. So we already had, in September, two people come. There was a business owner who wasn't getting paid. There was a grant person who wasn't getting paid. So that says that we're not paying our bills. And then today, we learned that we're not even collecting money that is due to us. And I've come here several times, and I've written to the payroll supervisor, the pension fund supervisor, to say that monies that were deducted from my pay in August 2022, those were pension monies that should have been sent to Trenton, have not been sent to Trenton. Now, we all know that is not right. And I see legal, legal, no, that's not legal. You cannot take money. Let's say if it was child support. If I had a child support payroll deduction come out of my pay and you're holding my money, there's a problem. We are sounding the alarm when we come up here. We want you to be fiscally responsible. We want you to ask the questions. How much are these cameras costing? You just said, hold this issue about the solar-powered, I haven't seen one of these trash cans, but I know junk, when I see junk, I've only seen it on social media, but that's some junk, and I don't know why we're trying to buy more junk. When you can buy a plastic trash can, I've lived in other municipalities and they have bought some big containers, we, to even come here at night, it's a, it's filthy.
Thank you, Ms. Hannibal.
This is the Patterson that I love, and I, I hate what's happening here. It hurts my heart. And I, I mean, I don't have this kind of time. I have church activities, I have community activities, I go work with children in the school to teach them about the importance of voting, and this hurts my heart. I want somebody to care. That's all we want.
Thank you, Ms. Hannibal.
And if you're not examining these, if you're not examining these invoices and stuff that is being presented before you, then why are you there? So please, people, go vote because people are making decisions for us and they don't care about us. They don't care. This, I've seen a lady out there that's probably old enough to be my grandmother almost in this, in this alleyway. That makes no sense.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Mr. Victor M. Urbans.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you, thank you for the space. I, to my surprise, I saw aisle number forty-seven on the agenda for the bid for the Twelfth Avenue Park. And it brings me great pleasure to see you there because we worked to get this done for the last six months. However, having said that, my organization, Dominican American Political Force, sent out a letter about the park back in September, and we never got a reply from nobody on the city council. The mayor did respond, and it is on the agenda, and we are very pleased to see it. Having said that, once that bid is done, we would like the community to collaborate as to the new look of that park on Twelfth Avenue on the Fourth Ward. The other issue that I would like to address, it is the issue of the garbage in the city of Patterson. Oftentimes, my organization, again, Dominican American Political Force, we go around the city taking photographs of the dumpings, of the garbage areas, and even the flower pots right outside City Hall are filled with garbage. You know, people stay on the bus stops. I walk a lot through the city. I'm a walker. And right outside the City Hall, people on the bus stops next to filled in garbage, you know? And that's something, I mean, I don't know if I'm the only one who sees this. And it is a issue that needs to be addressed. I know we're putting all this money into these camera systems. My God, but we cannot even clean flower pots. So it is something that has to address, and we can start small. We can start just cleaning the area of City Hall and expand from there. Basic cleaning that we can do. We have the personnel. We have the volunteers. We have schools that these kids can volunteer. I mean, the question becomes, do we really want to do it? Because our homes, our homes are clean. We clean our homes. Why can't we just clean the fire, the pla?
Members of the public, we're on the republic portion, please.
It is, it is vital, it is vital that we take care of this. And lastly, all I want to say is this, we have a duty, you have a duty, to really take on these issues. The, the, the personnel is there. Reach out to us. Listen, let's get together and get this city cleaned because if we don't, no matter how many cameras we have, it's, it's very simple. We've got seventy-seven cameras, seventy-seven spaces, we'll find other seventy-seven that do not have cameras. So it is vital that we get together as people, as a city, and try to tackle these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Erica Plaza.
Good evening. My name is Erica Plaza. Most of you that know me and have worked with me, I am Plaza, that's how they call me. I am one of the candidates for Patterson Board of Ed. I'm running. I do want to say to the public that I am running because I care. I know everybody that's here today, they're here because they care about Patterson. I am a student from School Two. I'm a, I'm proud to be from Patterson. Proud to be from Patterson, and I acknowledge everybody thinking about our kids, our, our kids that are, we need to empower them. And that's what I want to do as a woman, as Latina, and all the cultures that I love because I say I'm Afro-Latina, for those that don't know. So I am Afro-Latina, and I'm very proud of my roots. And I'm going to work towards everybody. I do not see no color. I'm a person that I keep it real, and I speak my mind, and I will continue to speak my mind. So thank you, everybody. I am five J. Please vote, November fifth. I really need everybody's support. I need the community to come out and vote, please. You need to come out and vote. This is the only way we are going to make a difference for our students and our future, our future doctors, lawyers, mechanic, and even future mayors. So please, help me. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker, David Gilmore.
Good evening, Dave Gilmore, Patterson. I want to speak fast because it's three minutes. A killer. I came here from the hospital, from the hospital today because I care. I care. And I want you to know, VA Hospital, because I'm a veteran, and I want to remind you, on my federal lawsuit denied me my right to speak, deny me again. Deny me one more time so we can amend the case for the fifth time, for the six years that we're pushing this federal case forward. Matter of fact, you owe my lawyer a hundred thousand dollars. And the case, that first case is over, closed a year ago. I paid forty thousand dollars. I want my money. You owe her a hundred thousand dollars. I want my damn money. Now, back to this situation with the permit fees. Fire me again because I am the whistleblower on the permit fees out of my office. The illegal activities of the people that work in that office pushing COs and permits forward without the receipt of the fees. The fees come through the sewer, sewer division. This thing here that you got here, you want to change the law, but you got to go back to the state. The state says who, how this thing is processed, not the city. And then you had it for economic development. It's not an economic development issue. It's a DPW issue. So whoever did this, names, I won't, I won't embarrass nobody. Embarrass yourself putting, putting stuff on here. At the end of the day, it's illegal to change it without going to the state. You can't do that. And who's it benefiting? Changing the permit fees or the sewage connection fees from, from pre-permit to pre, uh, uh, CO? It's for the developers. Developers have too much influence. You know, I'm not mad at the developers. Yeah, they have a job to do, but it's the community residents that approve it. Why? No parking, overcrowding, overcrowding in schools. We can't support all this development and no taxes on these developments for thirty years. What are you doing? Something's wrong here. I'm not accusing nobody of nothing, but I'm not stupid. Other people were called stupid earlier. I'm not stupid. I'm not one of them. So I see things for what they are. It's clear to me what's going on. So I'm here on my own volition. I work for Tiffany Delaney, formerly the, well, currently the Director of Economic Development. Thank God she's there. Got rid of old racist Mike Powell firing blind people, when firing me for some sexual accusations that were unfounded and found to be in conspiracy with others to fire me. Fire me again for telling the truth. I've, I wrapped myself in the First Amendment. I'm a veteran, Vietnam-era vet, and I don't stand up there and, and give false testimony to pledge allegiance like a lot of people do. I don't do that. I served, okay? And at the end of the day, fire me again if you want to.
Thank you, Dave.
We'll just amend the case again.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Twindle Prater.
Good afternoon. My name is Twindle Prater, and I would just like to share how my quiet life has been interrupted by an illegal business by my neighbor. Two weeks ago, a fleet of gypsy buses began to trickle down my street. I called my councilman, no intervention. My neighbor decided that she was going to start renting out her vacant property with grass and soil to a bunch of buses. Called the Patterson Police, they said to me that it's her property, she can do what she wants to. I went to the inspector's office, excuse me, sir. I went to the inspector's office. They came out, they put a ticket on her door, but evidently, she is so comfortable running this illegal business that it is in full effect. Every day, what, what happens is that the drivers of these buses, they come down my little street, which is a dead-end street. They take the buses out and they park their cars on this, like I said, grass, soil, diesel buses. So we're talking about contamination. Some of these buses are backing so close to one of my neighbor's property that I know in the morning when they start these buses up, toxins, fumes are going into their houses. Some of the neighbors said the noise from the buses from backing up, beep, 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 is so much noise that it's just the quality of our life has just gone to a minimum. If you ride down Webster Avenue right now, you will see a fleet of buses parked on the street and on her property. And I just want to know what is going to be done because if I'm bringing this issue to you, that means we need help on Webster Avenue. And how comfortable can you be doing illegal business in Patterson? I'm just saying, people have illegal businesses in this city and they are comfortable running these businesses. Even with the inspectors coming out, giving a warning, there's been no effort for her to cease. So that goes to show you how comfortable people are running illegal businesses in this city. They just figure, hey, give me a warning, I'm still going to continue to do what I want to do. And I, my quality of life, I want a, a nice quality of life. It's Patterson, but so what? This is where I live. This is the city that I take pride in. And you just can't do what you feel like doing. So I'm bringing this issue and I need help from you guys. Webster Avenue. And, and another thing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one more thing, I'm going to be quick. One-one-four Webster Avenue. If you ride up there near, you will see a hundred gypsy buses parked on the, on the, the soil, grass, toxins. Gypsy buses. Well, they're not, they're school buses and those little white buses. And another thing, the dumping on Nagel Street, Second Ward. Call the councilman, no intervention.
Thank you. We appreciate your information. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Elvis Durn.
Mr. Elvis Dorn, Fourth Ward, Patterson, New Jersey. Y'all can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Before I get, before I get into my event, I just want to say to the public that the art factory is closed down for good. And I have a plan for y'all. Patterson, New Jersey, need a community center, recreation center. We need a performing arts center for the youth, for people that could sing, rap. We need a performing arts center for the youth, for people that could sing, rap, even for these professional singers to come into town or to the city. We also need a hotel. And that one building could provide all that at the Art Factory. Okay? Not a prostitute motel, someone said. We need a professional hotel, okay? And this Art Factory could, could deliver this, because I believe when it was open, they had some, they had a hotel in there. And they had, they had apartments in there, so it's no excuse. We have a building there. Bring it. Bring the performing arts center, bring the hotel, bring the recreation center building. All that could be in one building, okay? Jobs. That's, it's gonna create a lot of jobs, y'all. More job, less problems. Now, I could get into my event. Elvis Dorn Outreach Music Productions coming to the First Ward. Elvis Dorn Outreach Music Productions presents Christian Mania. Christian Mania 2024, Sunday, November 3rd, 2024. Doors open at three o'clock PM. This event will start on time at four o'clock PM. It's going to be at New Generation Kingdom Apparel Ministry. 170 North Main Street. 170 North Main Street in Patterson, New Jersey, where the pastor is Pastor Thomas Purry. At this event, I'm going to have four speakers. Each speaker got, each speaker got ten minutes. And one of the speakers is my blood brother. We got the same mama. Chef David Banister. Minister Chef David Banister will be speaking at this event. For more information, you could call me at eight-six-two-eight-two-three-three-eight-nine-five. This is a free will donation event. Everyone is invited to come to this event, okay? Um, y'all can hear me, right? Okay. Everyone is invited to come to this event. This event is gonna be so amazing. Um, also, I want to, um, promote my YouTube channel. My YouTube channel is Patterson NJ Good News. You can find so many great things that's going on in this city. Patterson NJ Good News on YouTube. I also have a Facebook page. My Facebook page got, got the information, got more information than any other media in this city. My Facebook page is Elvis Good News, D U R H A M. My Facebook page, Elvis Good News, D U R H A M. My YouTube, Patterson NJ Good News. God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Elvis. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Cameo Black. Cameo Black. She's not there.
Oh, yes.
She's downstairs. Corey Teague.
No, no, she's coming.
Oh, she's coming? Oh, she was.
Good evening. I'm here, um, oh shit, the thing fell off. Um, Valdez ain't here, but I'm coming to make y'all aware. On Friday, on Market and Southern Street, they started gang initiation. Unfortunately, one of the kids that was coming out of East Side, he just got punched in the mouth. Uh, his mouth was leaking. I made Captain Murray, Invaldez, aware of it. Then like two o'clock that morning, Saturday morning, they did a robbery. But the people that they tried to rob beat the shit out of them. I know everybody don't heard about it. But then this morning, eight-thirty, kids going to school. They gotta run because of the gang initiation. Then this afternoon, I had to physically go downstairs on one foot. I have pictures of the cops standing outside chilling with the guys like it's nothing. If the police is out there to protect and serve, they chilling with the people. What is the point of the police being there? Who do we reach out to? And then I talked to certain people. It's like, oh, they don't care. How many more kids have to get killed? How many more kids do we have to bury? When is it gonna stop? When is it gonna end? Everybody come up here. Everybody sit here fighting about the biz and all this other shit. Excuse my language, but these kids' life is in danger. Kids is dying every single day. How many more kids do we have to bury? How many? Everybody calling my phone, talk about vote. I don't give a fuck who win. I'm on one foot. Since I've been on this foot, I've talked to two people, Ruby Cowan, Mike Jackson. I appreciate y'all for reaching out to me. Everybody always calling about votes and about this and about that. Don't call me. I'm not voting for nobody. I don't care who win. At the end of the day, it's about these kids. If you don't care about the kids, if we not talking about kids, don't call me. Because I'm sick of it. And everybody always say, oh, don't go speak up for this person. Don't go speak up for that person. Then you look like the bad guy. If I'm gonna look like the bad guy, so be it. Because I'm gonna stand ten toes down for these kids, like I keep telling y'all. Every year, it's about to be the sixth year that I go in my pocket and go and give something for these kids. It's the same people that helped me. It takes a village to raise these kids. There's a lot of parents, y'all know, that these kids don't get the treatment at home. They out here in these streets looking for it. If you see them, help them out. Reach out to them. I don't care, black, white, Spanish, whatever color it is. Everybody is starting to make everything a race issue. I don't give a damn what color the kid is. If you see him in distress, help him. If y'all see somebody chasing him, like I said, I seen a kid getting chased today with a knife. Thirty people, thirty kids, I got the footage, chasing one kid. The kid, the cop sat in a car and did absolutely nothing. So I went downstairs and had to go to the fucking car and ask them, what's up? Y'all, how can I see this out my third floor window, but y'all can't see this right here in y'all face? Enough is enough. And like I said, Mendez, don't do it. Don't do it, Mendez. Don't do it. Because if it was one of y'all, you gonna do the same thing. Not to sound racist, but that boy by Sea Town, y'all bust y'all ass to get him back to DR. Start doing the same thing for our fucking black kids, because I'm tired of it.
Next, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Good evening. Corey Teague, 65 Prince Street. I was out there today, and I happened to see that as well. But I, I just want to say a couple of things. First thing is, leadership is not so much about being in charge, but it's about taking care of the people that you've been entrusted to be in charge of. That's what leadership is about. Now, children are in school between six to ten hours a day, and I'll explain why. Depending on whether they have an after-school program, Boys and Girls Club, and what have you. But the time that they're not in school impacts the time that they're in school. And that's one of the biggest problems I have, because we have this attitude that if it doesn't happen on school property or it doesn't take place on school grounds, that we shouldn't be concerned about it. These are our children, whether they're in school or whether they're on the corner. So, the kind of leadership that I have brought is not even to lead, but it's to actually assist the community. So, yes, I am running this year for a position on the school board, not to be in charge of anything, but to actually be one of the voices up there that care. I have a fifteen-year-old, non-verbal, autistic son, who I've been fighting for every year of his life. And I'm going to take that same passion and continue to fight for all the children in the district. I've been doing it for years, and I'm going to continue to do it. No matter what may come, no matter what may happen, health issues that have happened in the past, all I'm asking is that you guys consider me as one of your choices. I'm three J on the ballot. You guys know what I'm bringing to the table. As far as the cameras, I got to touch on this real quick. Look, I have hundreds of hours of footage of illegal dumping. And I in charge the city a dime. It's free. Y'all can just go up there and grab it. The DPW director spoke to me. We're gonna meet. I might even have to testify in court that that's my footage that I took. That way, we can take these people to court. So, no matter how many cameras they put in the street, just know Corey Teague's camera will be there too. And whatever's on my page, you guys can grab that for free. It's free of charge, and it's actual footage. I'm not, it's not AI-generated. I'm standing there watching them dump the stuff out of the truck onto the sidewalk. The last video we posted, I think it got, what, twenty or thirty thousand views? So it's not a problem of people seeing it. It's a problem of actually taking action. Now, we want the community to step forward, but a lot of times, the community is waiting to see the leadership step forward. One of the only people that I've seen, well, you know, I ain't gonna go there. I'm, I'm, I'll put it like this. As a community and as a city council and as a school board, we all need to get together. Because when you take away the school board, you take away the city council, we're all Patterson residents. So one day, we all need to just get together, put our titles aside, and say, we're Patterson. And start working on voting for a new mayor. That's what we gotta do. At what point do we get tired and say enough is enough? At what point do we get tired and say enough is enough? If you continue to do the same things, you will continue to get the same results. You cannot fix the problems with the same thinking that created them.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We already know that the One Patterson theme was a hoax. Now it's time for us to do something about it.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Nella V. Samwells. Nella V. Samwells.
Excuse me, Mendez. Can I ask that you have some manners, because I have bipolar and I will switch. Have manners. Have manners. Don't cut me off. If I'm not finished, have manners. That's all I ask. Okay, I'm here to represent Tier One Chosen Generation. We're having a gala on the twenty-sixth of October, 2024, between one and five. The reason why I came to be a PR person and volunteer representation is because Tier One Chosen Generation has helped me out a lot. And I seen where they helped the community as far as drugs, alcohol, and mental health. We're actually making a difference, making a change. We go out there and we do harm reduction. And I see where Mayor Sayer has put a lot of funding into Tier One Chosen Generation, and he's allocating those monies in the proper way. Um, the gala is to give back to the people who have donated to Tier One as, you know, monies, funds. So he's giving plaques and whatever, and it's gonna be a, um, it's gonna be, I'm sorry, I got blank. It's gonna be a show and everything and a dinner at the Brownstone on the twenty-sixth. I can give you Dr. Moody's number. I have tickets. The tickets are a hundred dollars. And Dr. Moody's number is two oh three nine four seven seven four one six. If I give you a ticket, um, it's a hundred dollars, and you zell the money directly to Dr. Moody. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker, Michael Ito.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Ito, and I live at 463 Priestess Ave. I have no shame in telling where I am, where I live. Well, what's going on in the city is, a lot of times, I don't agree in how Mike Jackson puts it, but I have to start agreeing with what's going on, what he's saying. Because if you look, if you drive around the city of Patterson and you spend all that money on cameras, a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, somebody got caught up by the dog pound. The license plate was there, the person's face was there, the model of the truck. As far as I know, nothing happened. The way it used to be was Mayor Graves used to go to your house and pick you up. Harry, you remember that, when Graves used to go to your house and pick you up. He was a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week mayor, and there was no cell phone. He had two telephones in his car. And if something happened, he turned his ass right around and came back here. Because he remembers that this is where it all started, right here. The other thing is that we have so much, with the illegal dumping is going on, we need to start holding property owners accountable, because I come home on Broadway. I come down Route Four from, from Paramus area every day. And every single week by, by, on Broadway, there's an apartment building and next to it's a dead, empty lot. And every single week, there's sofas and tables and garbage. It has to be coming from the apartment building. You cannot tell me that somebody is, is driving around, driving around the same exact spot, the same exact, every single week. So we need to start holding those people accountable. And then also too, is what's going on in the city? Is I don't know about the Patterson App, the Patterson Plus, but a lot of things get closed and they're not even rectified. It's sad when I have to drive around the city of Patterson at four-thirty in the morning, take pictures, and then send it to the mayor's cell phone at five, six o'clock in the morning. Because this, this is not the way the city should operate. The other thing is too, is that we need to bring back the bulk garbage. Because it doesn't matter if you schedule it, it doesn't get picked up. One of my wife's friends lives on Union Ave, 508 Union Ave. And she has, she has to put out bulk garbage. So she called them. She doesn't know how to do a computer and, and, and all that stuff. She called them. They said that you have to do it on the app, that you have to schedule. Why can't you just call and say, okay, we put your name down and get it? We need to start going back to basics, because a lot of people don't know how to use the phone like that. So if we go back to basics, where, where's the street cleaners? Down by Broad, Broadway, Lower Broadway, from Masonic Temple to the Board of Health, has not seen a street sweeper in months, if not years. Why? Then we also have to stop, the best way to do is the sewer fees, is you have to collect them before the work gets done. Because if you don't get it now, you ain't, your ass ain't gonna get it. That's simple. All the illegal building that's going on, we need to hire somebody from this, to watch the city and watch all the sale, all the houses that are for sale. Tom Fascaldo's house was listed. It was bought by a flipper. It was turned around, I'm wrapping it up. It was turned around. It's 429 Priestess Ave. They made a basement apartment out of there. They're charging fifteen hundred dollars a month. So now, how does it, what's the process when you buy a house? Does the inspectors go back right away? Well, we need to change that. We need to go back three or four months down the road. And that's where you'll find your illegal apartments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Chanel Fields.
Good evening. Uh, before my time is started, I was instructed and requested by the family of Mary Taylor for her time, because it's after my time, but before my time even starts, um, the family requested a moment of silence, because we did have a vigil tonight in front of City Hall. So we can have a moment of silence for Mary Taylor. Justice for Mary Taylor. Justice for Mary Taylor.
Justice for Mary Taylor.
Good evening. As I stand united here together on today, not just in memory of Mary Taylor, but I also stand on behalf of those we've lost to gun violence in a call for justice that is long overdue. We need justice. We deserve justice, and we need peace. But we can only have peace.
We need fire in the room before we continue the meeting, so.
No problem.
You can continue.
Continue. We need justice. We deserve justice, and we need peace. But we can only have peace when justice has been served. We cannot continue to look the other way. The family of Mary Taylor and these victims have endured daily unimaginable pain. Pain so gut-wrenching that its grief extends far beyond the loss of losing a loved one. Precious memories in rotation, as they linger in the forefronts of each of our minds, are continuously affected. Every life connected to her has been shattered. And with this kind of pain, it can only be sued with justice. We are calling on our judicial leaders and our system to aid us in getting on track to receive closure for the broken loved ones who remain behind. Let us know that Mary Taylor's life mattered. You see, justice is not only about holding individuals accountable. It stretches wide and far, reaching into space of order to ultimately restore a sense of balance while simultaneously instilling some dignity. while simultaneously instilling some dignity back into those left behind. Without the accountability of justice, families are left in limbo. Not only grappling with grief, but left conflicted due to the void of absence of so many answers not provided and lack of responsibility enforced. We must continue to raise our voices for those whose lives have been since been silenced by gun violence. Mary Taylor's family deserves the truth. They desperately need and deserve to heal. Now is the time to ensure that their suffering is met with action. We cannot continue to cower. We cannot back down. We must stand together, community, to consistently create a future where justice is not an anomaly, but the rule followed through. Thank you.
Let's pick a matter clerk.
Kenneth Rosado.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
City and residents. Uh, my name is Kenny Rosado and I am honored to stand before you as candidate for the Patterson Board of Education. As a proud product of School Three and a graduate of Don Bosco High School, I know firsthand the importance of quality education and the role it plays in shaping our future. I am a proud homeowner, taxpayer, dedicated father, and a business owner in this city who has had the privilege of serving our community. Uh, my experiences as a parent and entrepreneur have deepened my commitment to ensuring that every child in this city has access to education, resources, and support they need to succeed. I am running for the Board of Education because I believe that our children deserve the best and I am committed to working tirelessly to improve our schools. I am one J on the ballot and together we can build a brighter future for all Patterson students. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's pick a matter clerk.
Next speaker, Allen D. Jefferson.
Uh, no justice, no peace. Uh, I wanna give honor to, uh, one of Patterson's finest police officers, Officer Gilchrist. Can we get a moment of silence? May he rest in peace, brother. Uh, I didn't come here tonight to, uh, I came here ang- as an angry black man, okay, but I gotta be humble tonight. I'm gonna get away from this mic, cause you can hear me, okay? Number one, okay, um, the dumping, okay? We, everybody knows the problem, okay? We see it, the cameras are there, they're taking the pictures, okay? Now we need to take some action, okay? We, we done all the talking, let's do some action, okay? We can start from City Hall, cause City Hall is a mess. Jewelry, feces, rats, okay? I say this, okay? I'm not going through the mic, but you can hear me. You can't. Okay, now, okay, this is what we do, okay? Uh, we get the kids involved, okay? Because idle time is the devil's time, okay? Volunteers, okay? Uh, we see the garbage, we see everything. We need to have our homeowners and the people that are responsible for these properties and make sure that they clean them up. Period. And if they don't, fine them. Now you say, uh, I'm gonna talk about, uh, the park, New Roberto Clemente Park. We're talking about all this money for a guy that came here last week, okay? I sat here till twelve, one o'clock, okay? Now, I'm gonna say this, okay? I don't care how many cameras you got, you need foot soldiers, number one. Number two, state, local, and Patterson police, foot soldiers. If you gotta get the reserves, get the reserves, okay? Because I don't care how many cameras you got, you got dead spots, okay? And dead spots, you can't, you ain't gonna get nothing. So all I'm saying is, is that I did security for the IRS, for the Patterson Board of Education, caught cancer, beat it at seventy-four Original Patterson, Alabama Avenue, okay? Now, don't tell me I don't know, I'll bait, I'll debate anybody here, anybody. Okay, after the election, okay? And I heard one guy say, you need to, we need to go back to school? Well, I want you to come and debate me and we can do it right on TV, okay? And I'll run you up out of here. You know who I'm talking about.
Let's pick a matter clerk.
Joseph Hart. Joseph Hart.
I'm here for a few things, cause it seem like the city of Patterson, especially the downtown, the downtown section of Patterson. It's not the same when I was a kid. It used to be beautiful, it's all crap to me, all of it. People don't care where they park at, they don't, they drive up on the sidewalk. I'd like to see more law enforcement give out them tickets. Cause a long time ago, there used to be an officer, nobody liked him, but he would get your ticket out quick, didn't tell you, yeah, that's right. They need some more of him back and buy the chase bank and all that. And now these guys put these motorbikes and whatnot. You know, I try to keep a cool temper, but I almost got hit by two of them. Why are they riding on the street and why? I take the transit buses every day. And it's like all the mini buses and all these cabs we got and the Ubers, they don't give a damn where they park at or how they park. Yep, and the transit buses have a hard time, especially on Ellis Street and all, main street, all of them. You got people that just double park, they, they block the fire hydrants and that's wrong. You know? I'm disabled right now. I used to drive too, but we reached Patterson, what it's lost, it's lost respect. There's no more respect from people. I could talk about the hoods and all that, I, I want the hoods and all that stuff. But I'm not here for that. Because I gotta walk every day to the bus stop or wherever else I'm going. And it's just not right. They, they got the merchandise on the sidewalks on both sides. Where are handicapped, disabled people supposed to walk? Cause I'm, you know, if I be in a wheelchair or something and then cars wanna park like that, I'm gonna cut right through the damn thing. I ain't gonna care. Cause they ain't supposed to be parked there anyway and they should get big fines. I see that fine for fifty-five dollars, make it two hundred and fifty, that five dollars. They won't park there no more. That's all I got to say right now. I'll be back.
Let's pick a matter clerk.
Abed Tabata.
I'll bet Tabata one seventy-eight, Michigan Ave.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm here, the residents have a lot more pressing issues than what I have. I contacted the city trying to find the traffic engineers to follow the proper protocol to get a speed hump on Michigan Avenue. This issue happened, I called about a month ago. And they said that they would reach out to the councilman, the councilman is inaccessible to me, I can't, he blocked my number on there. So he never called me back. They also said that they're gonna forward it to the councilmen's at large. No, I don't lie. You wanna see? No, the city clerk secretary, the council secretary said she's gonna email my councilman as well as the three councilmen's at large. And I should receive a response to see what's the process. Never heard nothing back for a month. Listen, I got two, four ye- I have four children. I have two kids under, uh, two kids that are one years old, a five year old and a three year old. Everybody races up and down Michigan Avenue. I'm sure this happens all in the rest of the city. It's not just an isolated case. But I gotta watch out for my children and the children in my neighborhood. Michigan Ave is supposed to get paved past spring, according to my councilman, but it never happened. So hopefully next year, but before it gets paved, I wanna try to get a speed hump installed. So can I get information about that? What's the process? I know that we have to get, but it says you have to contact, you have to send an email to the traffic engineer. According to the code for section four twenty-nine dash three, under section F, it says send an email to the traffic engineer and, but we, the city has no traffic engineer. And if you call up City Hall or the Traffic Division, DPW, uh, City Clerk, as well as the City Council Office, it's just a revolving circle. Everybody transfer to the next person and nobody has answers. So.
Ca- Councilwoman.
They said they don't, yeah, we don't have, so you, so there's nobody to email.
Stay, stay, stay here, you're gonna, at the end of the public portion, we'll get back to you.
Ordinance or resolution is flawed.
We'll get back to you at the end of the public portion.
I appreciate that. Another thing is, I mean, you guys, every single person unanimously voted for a ceasefire in Gaza, for the genocide. And you guys are gonna start shaking your heads, yes, you guys did, Udine drafted it. But then your guys are enabling the enablers. Enabling the enablers for the genocide. Who, Vice President Harris? Did she come out and say anything? Nellie Poe got a endorsement by AIPAC. Yeah, I saw you deleting my camera and Facebook, it doesn't matter. I'll come right here on live TV and I'll tell everybody. You endorsed Nellie Poe, that's enabling the genocide. So where do you stand? Don't be a hypocrite. Either you're a genocider or you're not. So pick, pick a side. Thank you.
Let's pick a matter clerk.
Joel Keys Jr.
Ca- Councilmembers, where, yeah, um, let's pick a matter clerk, oh, Joe Key.
He's there.
Good evening.
Good evening. Joe Keys, Patterson.
You look sharp today, man.
Oh, dang, I got on my school clothes, I ain't changed today. Thank you. I wanna explain further what I mean when I say we wanna bring democracy to Patterson. The political system in the United States is a democracy. And the opposite of democracy is corporate imperialism. If I claim that we need to bring democracy to Patterson, it is clear that corporate imperialism is ruling the day in Patterson and everywhere else in the United States. I was reading War Against All Puerto Ricans, a story about Pedro Albizo Campos, the leader of the Puerto Rican Nationalist Party who led the Puerto Rican Revolution for Independence. Upon reading the following statement, quote, "Throughout Central America, the Rigs National Bank was suspected of laundering money for right-wing dictators, bribing legislators, destabilizing populist regimes, and financing military coups disguised as revolutions on behalf of the United Fruit Company," unquote. I immediately researched the United Fruit Company because the name was familiar. It led me to John Foster Dulles and his brother Alan Dulles. Consequently, I purchased three books. The Brothers, John Foster Dulles, Alan Dulles, and Their Secret World War. The Devil's Chessboard, Alan Dulles, the CIA, and the Rise of America's Secret Government. And Dulles, a biography of Eleanor Allen and John Foster Dulles and their family network. The Dulles Brothers changed the game of corporate imperialism. They started out as corporate lawyers on Wall Street at Cromwell and Sullivan. Two of their clients were the J. Henry Schroeder Banking Corporation, a financial agent for the Anglo-Iranian Oil Company in Iran, where Mohamed Mosaddegh was the prime minister. In Guatemala, where Jacobo Arbenz was the president, they represented the United Fruit Company. They lost their clients' bids to gain ownership of vast real estate containing raw materials producing tremendous wealth in each country. A few years later, John Foster Dulles became Secretary of State and Alan became the head of the CIA. Their first order of business was to exact revenge on Arbenz and Mosaddegh by overthrowing their respective governments and giving the coveted land to their clients, the J. Henry Schroeder Banking Corporation and the United Fruit Company. They effectively changed the game of corporate imperialism and has only gotten stronger since. Councilman Mike Jackson is a combination of Pedro Albizo Campos and Malcolm X. And we are campaigning for him to be the next mayor because he represents the social justice activism that the Bring Democracy to Patterson movement demands of each community member. He has been steadfast in fighting against the corporate imperialist actions of this present administration as they continue to rob the city blind.
Let's pick a matter clerk.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Motion to close, motion to close public portion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Adaliziz, seconded by Councilman Mims. Roll call by a clerk to close the public portion.
Roll call to close the public portion of the municipal council regular meeting of Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, Councilman Adaliziz.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I'm not gonna be the law counsel, councilman. So we had a sixth ward resident that came here, talked to me about Michigan Ave and speed humps. The elections were over, you came here when the elections were here, you spoke, you went MIA. Now you come back with an issue. I saw you numerous times at our Neighborhood Association meeting. You didn't come up to me, talk to me anything about speed humps. You have my aide's number, you didn't go and call him about speed humps. You did not call City Hall because my colleagues, our council at large, didn't receive an email. You are a constituent, you wanna come here and address it, just be honest. Say the issue and I'll address it for you. The residents know I get things done. Hence in the election, you learned it the hard way, when they delivered an overwhelming victory. But don't come here and lie. You saw me at three Neighborhood Association meetings. You want me, you want me to call the members in Neighborhood Association? Not once that you came up to me and said to me, hey, we would like a speed hump. I'm here to get things done. Regardless, you could call me, I'll give you the number you could call, five five one two six six zero two four five. You wanna, you could email me, the, the, Madam Clerk, I'm not gonna put this on you. I'm not gonna allow him to come say that he told, cause I have received all the emails from your, your staff. And to show, this is not just me, none of my council at large colleagues received this email. So stop, just stop. You wanna get things done? I'll teach you how to get things done if you wanna work hand in hand. There's a way, there's a way to work hand in hand, alright? So, so, listen, 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 listen.
We're in the closing of public portion. No, no.
Council President, this is what happens when.
Respectfully, respectfully, it's not a debate.
Council President, I'm addressing his concerns.
Go ahead, Council.
I'm addressing his concerns, but it's not fair to the, to the, um, to the women that work in that office because we always receive their emails and we're not gonna allow you to use them as political pawns. Don't get upset, right? This is what happens, right? Elections are over. You saw what we did to you and the results prove it, that the residents of Sixth Ward don't play these games. So you saw me three times, you saw me three times, you didn't address it. I will, uh, follow up with you, I'll have my aide reach out to you regarding the speed humps. Um, we'll follow ordinance and you're right, Michigan Ave is gonna get done. Um, hopefully in the fall, the, uh, and while I'm at it, Council President, Illinois Ave will be repaved on October thirtieth. If you've been driving around the Sixth Ward, you'll see that they're doing all the roads as we speak. Dakota, Genesee, Knickerbocker, but you've been MIA, right? You're not making your videos anymore. Drive around the Sixth Ward, you will see that they are actually repaving the, the, the roads. Go through, go to Maine and Genesee right now. You'll see that the construction vehicles are there doing the handicap accessible, um, uh, corners right now. So thank you for highlighting that your road will be repaved. I will follow up with you. I have an email address. Any concerns you have, please email me. Don't be afraid to come up to me and speak to me in public. Elections are over. You know, we could work together. You wanna do it the right way? Don't use the city clerk's secretaries as some political thing that you. Don't use the city clerk's secretaries as some political thing that you told them and they said they emailed and blamed them for not getting emails, alright? So Madam Clerk, oh, but before I finish, there are very, very important elections coming up. And in the Sixth Ward, everyone has ways to advocate for their, their, what they feel is important to them. And in the Sixth Ward, Harry, you're a resident, you received my, my messages and my emails. We must go out and exercise our right to vote, right? And on November fifth, I'm urging everyone to go, vote Row A. Many partners on the Row A Democratic ticket that helped me get things done in this city. And more importantly, don't forget the school board candidates. Six Ward residents, the school board candidates are, are very instrumental what your tax bill is gonna look like in the next year or so, right? Look at the tax increases that have come up, they've come from the school board. And I'm standing strongly and firmly behind number one on the ballot, Kenny Rosado, and number two on the ballot, Hector Nieves, that are gonna represent all children, the taxpayers, and hopefully for better schools. If you could see, every single year, uh, last year, new people came on the, the school board. They've been starting to decrease, it's, uh, started bringing the tax increase lower and lower. We can't sustain what's happening in the school district at this time. So please don't forget, Row A and one, two, on, on line J. Thank you, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Adelaziz, Councilwoman Cotton.
Madam Clerk, I just wanna make it clear with Councilman Al next to me that the reason why, you know, they was here for twenty-five years and they did not raise taxes like they should have, had during those twenty-five years. So they threw it back in our lap and now we have to do what we needed to do. So for twenty-five years, you took over our school system and you see what we got. Nothing, nothing. So I just wanna say, I wanna close to, I just wanna say to, I wanna answer to some of the people that were there, Chanel, you know, um, um, there, there's a lot, you know, I, I, I feel for the parents or grandmothers who, who lost their child to violence. Uh, I think, I think we need to do more than what we can to, to help them to, 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 to get through this. Um, there's so much stuff that is happening, um, but you know, people have questions. I talk about, like, um, with Cameo Black, with, my son graduated Eastside High School in two thousand and three. And back in two, in nineteen ninety-nine, we had to go get our kids to Cross Market Street in two thousand and three. And here you're talking about twenty-one years later, they still got the problem over there. But you know, we have parents that we all work together. So how many I could fit in my car? How many could fit in my husband's car? How many could fit in my daughter's car? We took kids home. We didn't let children walk home. We made sure we got there. I hear coaches now, there'd be, I hear coaches like they dropping kids off all around the city and they get home and, and somebody's at the house with a car. Ain't worried about coming to pick up a kid from practice, ain't worried about come back and pick up a kid. So, community, we gotta step in and just help each other out. You know, I always say, we must learn how to help each other. I just wanna say also, when someone has said, I believe that, um, um, I know, I think it was that lady that's talked about the, the chimney buzzer. Call Community Improvement Director David Gilmore. He knows that that's illegal to park cars on grass, that you gotta have a paved lot. Um, I wanna say to Elvis, Elvis is always advocating for, for this city and, and, and showing us different activity that's going on. And we have to do what we can to, you know, engage with each other. For that Twelfth Avenue Playground, I, ever since I met with the young, the gentleman there, I can't think of what his name is. But, um, and, and not only was him, but there was other people before him. So at least now I can see that we're going out for bid for the Twelfth Avenue Playground that we're gonna get, um, we're going out for bid. And hopefully that we can also put a playground on the, um, Gowan Avenue side. Um, I just also wanna say the Tier One, they are having their gala on, uh, October twenty-sixth. Uh, Dr. Moody's, uh, with the Tier One Chosen Generation has been doing a lot in our city. Also, I wanna say too that, um, uh, the dumping, uh, I can say, um, when the contract came back that they was not gonna include dumping, I knew that that wasn't gonna be a problem because I went to a convention and I met five garbage contractors and none of them include, none of them include buck in their, in their rate, in their quotes. So everything, you, it's very difficult now to find a company who wants to pick up buck along with garbage. There's very few companies out there. As a matter of fact, it might be only one in New Jersey now that wanna do that. But that is a major problem. Uh, and what is, the only thing it's doing is making our DPW people work even harder and harder for that. But I do wanna say to, um, um, I'm gonna close with this. Um, with my school board candidates, I'm gonna, um, I've known Erica Plaza for more than twenty years. She's been involved with the schools. It's not like she just got started, she been involved, you know? And sometimes I say, sometimes you do it at the right time or whatever reason it is. And I still blame the state. You was here twenty-five years, you didn't do what you needed to do. And then all of a sudden, you drop it in our lap again and now we gotta go, we got to foot the bill. And so I say Erica Plaza has been involved for many years. Um, Corey T. has been involved for many years. Uh, he knows about the special needs kids and that was a major issue twenty-five years ago. Also with, uh, Nakima Redmond, she's, she's been involved. Sometimes, sometimes people think that it's everybody else's, but when you, I remember when the state came in, you stayed here all this time, you didn't do what you needed to do. And then all of a sudden, here it is yours again, and then you're, okay, what you gonna do now? Well, what else I'm gonna do now? I gotta raise some taxes. You gave me no choice, but at least we gotta get some of the things back. Let me tell you something, there's a lot of things going on in our school system. And I wanna say to parents, you've gotta start going to the Board of Ed meeting. And what I've learned, I went to a convention, National Council of Women this past week, and it says, community, let me tell you. You got to get to know everybody who's holding office. All the way from the President, you may not know the President, but at least you know your US senators. At least you know your US Congressman. Then you come on down to the Governor. Then you come on down to your state Senator. Then you come on down to your state assembly people. Then you come on down to your county people. Then you come on down to your city council people. Then you come on down to the Board of Ed people. You gotta get to know all of them because all of them play a different role in our life that affects all of us. All of them have a different role that they play. And I know one thing, and I'm gonna end with this.
Uh-oh, put my bag. Wait a second.
Councilwoman, you good? Okay, okay. You, you in the house?
And I'm gonna end with this. And I'm telling you, this is my choice for President of the United States. I have a pocketbook right here, see?
Well, that's beautiful.
She gonna be the next number forty-seven of the United States of America. Carmella Harris, our Vice President. Isn't this beautiful? She's gonna lead our country. Everyone, thank you, Madam Clerk. I had to throw this in here. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, well, to the members of the public, I mean, there's a lot that was said today. Um, a few highlights. I wanna go, um, to, uh, some of the things that Ms. Hannibal was talking about. Uh, she's absolutely correct. Um, the alarm has been sounding for quite some time. We witnessed even today, you know, the examples that she laid out. She did a great job laying out a lot of the examples of how the misappropriation of dollars. No matter what kind of community you have, I mean, you can't run a city without properly, um, you know, um, budgeting and expending the, uh, the money that, that you do have. And it's clear that Patterson has been, has done a very poor job in the bed. You're absolutely correct. There is no way this council, this administration will ever figure out how to put speed humps on roads where you're right, where your children, um, you know, and everyone else's children in this community should be sa- safe. But the fact of the matter is, we pay too much for services. And I, I showed you that tonight. I gave you an example and everyone came after me with the exception of one, and gave you excuse after excuse of why we should give this company this outlandish amount of money. So the examples are here, they're clear. And if we're not watching and being fiscally responsible, which Patterson has done a very, very poor job in doing so, I mean, just look at tonight's attendance. You know, council members voted in favor of change, reducing the meetings. Still not show up. If they don't show up to the tonight's meeting, that, that means they miss one, the one month, one meeting per month that we have. Now you have a skeleton crew, people are leaving early, you know? I never really paid close attention to, and maybe that's the, that's the fault, to council process back years ago. But I know when I did turn it on, it was a full council chamber there arguing. People like Rooney, who was well in his sixties, was, was there. One o'clock in the morning, twelve o'clock in the morning, you know, making sure that they, they watched after the, um, the city's budget. And even, even this recent tenure of council members, they were, you know, older gentlemen, but everybody stayed, they were professionals. Councilman Morris, Councilman, uh, McCoy, I mean, we, and, and they led the charge as the senior people there and everybody stayed and did their part. Now, we reduced the meetings and council members don't even wanna show up to meetings. But anyway, I'm not gonna sit here and labor for a long period of time, uh, time on the obvious. If you feel as if this could, if, if the current state of the city is going in the right direction, I mean, please. The state of the city address was an embarrassment. It was an embarrassment. And Libby's, that we, we should not have, uh, uh, sold it, with the, the owners of, of the, of the property was just issued a thirty thousand dollar fine because everyone believes that anything goes in Patterson, that's the rule of thumb. People come here, hey, you better sue the city, you're gonna make the money because anything goes in, in Patterson. And, uh, anyway, I'll just be sitting here rambling. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thanks, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims?
So to the public present and/or watching, I just wanna say thank you for your sacrifice, your time of coming out, voicing your opinions and giving, uh, recommendations and/or solutions to the issues in our community. There were so many concerns. Um, I know my good friend, Mrs. Harry Savalas, has, uh, written down the concerns um, to our hope, our officer in charges watching for one fourteen Webster Ave with the illegal business that's taking place. If not, I will be sending this request over. And so many other items that were addressed. Cameo Black, I was not aware of your, uh, of your situation until today when I saw you. Um, and so I will continue to pray for you, um, in your recovery process. Um, as well as the issue on five oh eight Union Ave that Michael Attell addressed, um, to our BA, let's just ensure that five oh eight Union Ave gets some special attention with vote process. Um, Justice for Mary Teller and to all of those that have been impacted by senseless acts of violence, whether it's been gunshots, stabbings, um, and all the things that are going on in, in our community. To, um, Mr. Abad, I don't wanna say your name wrong, from the Sixth Ward. So this is what, this is the process for, um, or it's supposed to be the process for getting, um, speed bumps or speed humps. You have to go to eight hundred Broadway, DPW to get the packet, there's a packet. You take that packet, you fill it out, you have to get it signed by every resident on, on that block. If you get one person that says no, it does not get approved. Get all that done, you submit it to our clerk's office or to our secretary's office. It is sent and is reviewed through our DPW committee. From that point, we move it forward so that it could get done. That's the process. I just wanna make sure you're aware. And I also made sure you have my cell phone number, so if you have any issues. I don't know what happened in translation, but I never got the email request. But you have my personal cell, so make sure, just reach out to me. I'm more than happy to give you that information. Um, I don't have any concerns with that. And if you need me to ride by or take pictures, just let me know. That's what I do as Councilwoman at Large. Um, also, I, I just wanna put on record, uh, to vote, vote Row A. From the top of the ticket down, I had the awesome opportunity to serve as a New Jersey delegate for the Kamala Harris and Tim Walz campaign to ensure they were on the ballot. And so we're moving from the ballot to the victory line. So make sure you vote Andy Kim, Senator, Congresswoman Nellie Poe, and then County Commissioner Sandy Lazara, John Bartlet, and my classmate and Eastside High School's two-time drum major Rodney DeVore for County Commissioner. For myself, I'm a mom, grandmother, former school board member, and I work in the schools every day with the children. So when I hear people say, I care for children, you don't care for children, you know, it, it kinda almost makes me chuckle because I'm in the schools every single day with the students, every day. There's not a day that goes by, I'm not there. Today I had a meeting with some students that were not even a part of Patterson Public Schools, but because they reached out, I chose to assist. Patterson, when I was on the school board, it was during the time of local, it was under state control and we fought hard to bring back, under the CUSAC, um, consortium, to make sure that we would get back local control, and I'm glad I was a part of that. But I did, um, make sure that we fought for things like music and art. And, you know, it's an autonomous process through the principals, whether it's in a building or not in a building. But those things were fought for. Teacher vacancies, that's not just in Patterson, it's across. Parents, everyone, whether you have a student in the district or not, you have to vote for people that's gonna fight for your children. That is gonna sit and advocate for things that you may not be aware that's going on. They sit, they vote for new programs in the school. They vote for transportation, facility issues and so forth and so on. So I want to endorse three people that I know for a certainty is gonna advocate for children. Corey Teague, Nakima Redmond, and Erica Plaza. Make sure you vote three, four, five. It's on the back of the ballot for those that are doing vote by mail and you're watching. Make sure you vote tres, cuatro, cinco for your children. Para niños. Vota tres, cuatro, cinco. Para niños. It is important that you vote for your students, for your, for your students, your children, and other people's children. Because if you don't have people sitting on that board, I have, I was on the board. So I can, I'm, I'm the only one, oh, uh, Council and President was on as well. But I served on the school board for three years, so I know exactly what happens on the school board. I know what needs to be done, how it needs to be done because I served there. And I'm, I'm saying to the public, please vote three J, four J, five J for your kids. Your kids deserve it because we have a lot of vacancies in our dis, in our buildings, in our schools. We have, um, programs and stuff that needs to continue. Let's vote for people that will fight for all children. Not based on, uh, anything outside of, but for children in and of their self. Three J, four J, five J. I think they're, I think they're gone home, so we may have to, so before he leaves, I just wanna say Patterson, cuz it looks like the meeting will shut down. Um, yeah, they went home, they said goodnight. So Patterson, I appreciate you. Let's continue to move this city forward. Let's continue to fight for things in the best interest of the people. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Urdin.
So, so. Legal, can we do the second session with even without?
We have, yeah, we have to.
Councilman, can you stay, Councilman, can you stay for the second session? Can you call, Al was Al, can you call?
No, we're gonna wait for him to come back.
No, Al. He's outside.
We gotta do the right thing.
So, Councilwoman, thank you, um. Members of the public, unfortunately, just members of the public, just a minute, uh.
He's coming?
Cooperation Council?
Council President, uh, Councilman Adelaziz is, uh, will be returning. He said approximately five minutes.
Can I still?
I, I'm leaving.
I can speak.
You still don't have a quorum.
So council members, so what we could do is, Madam Clerk, they could keep, they could keep, you know, just closing, make a comment, Councilman Dean, right after that we'll address the, the community.
You can't because you don't have a quorum.
No, we're not taking any form action.
You still cannot do it, you don't have a quorum.
We're not taking any.
Cooperation Council, we cannot, we are not going to vote, but can we speak? At least saving time.
We have no quorum.
Councilwoman Mims. So. Councilman Mims, man of clerk, so we check that and, uh, and definitely Councilman Dean.
No, I'm leaving. But I'm not. Patterson, I was here.
Just a minute.
Patterson, I'm going home.
Councilman Mims, just a minute. Man of clerk.
Let's take a five-minute break.
All right, Patterson, I'll be back to you in five minutes.
We're gonna take, we're taking a five-minute break.